All right, going to call this August 2020 meeting to order. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Lacey Township. Please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have a good evening.
Statement of adequate notice. Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised on the district website on August 18th, 2020, and by posting the notice in the Forkett River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as required by the Open Public Meeting Act and the New Jersey State Legislation A 3850-S2294. Roll call for attendance, please, Mr. George.
Yes, sir. Mr. Scanlon.
Here.
Mr. Peters.
Present.
Mrs. McAvoy.
I'm present.
Mr. Polino. Mrs. De Senza.
Mrs. De Senza, present.
Mr. Riggs.
Present.
Mrs. Downing. We have a quorum.
Okay. And we are going to be right into public comment. This is public comment on the agenda portion of the meeting. An audience member wishing to make a comment shall raise his or her hand when called upon, state their name, address, or affiliation, and intention to make a statement. Comments shall be limited to agenda items only. Comments shall be addressed to the Board President. Comments may be made on one issue at a time, be limited to five minutes. No audience member will be recognized twice until all who wish to comment have been recognized. So anyone that would like, raise your hand, please.
Okay, so at this time, anybody who would like to make a public comment on those agenda items only, you may do that. If you're calling in via phone, you can dial star nine. You'll be called to unmute your microphone and speak in turn, and keep in mind, there is the five-minute limit. So, at this time, William Stemley, please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment on agenda items only.
Okay, is my microphone working now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Few comments. First of all, I'm concerned about the idea of having in-school instruction at this point. I'm afraid that we just don't know enough about this virus yet. Every day, it seems that they're coming up with new information about it. It seems to pass by children in terms of mortality, largely, although not completely, but children have been found to have serious medical conditions as a result of this that can impact them for the rest of their lives. And I'm not sure that we know enough about how to prevent that exposing all of our children to potentially bleak futures. The other thing is that with the schools, the way that they're set up, I'm not sure that there's adequate ventilation. Granted that there are windows that can be opened, but the fact of the matter is that on a hot day, the air conditioning is going to pass things throughout the entire building, and on a cold day, the heat is going to be on and pass viruses throughout the whole building. Anybody who's had children go to school, and I've had three of them, knows that schools are a prime source of infection at the best of times. And sadly, this isn't the best of times. The other thing is that I'm also concerned about the way that the schedule is set up. I understand that Berkeley Township has the A group going Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday, school is closed for, and then the B group goes on Thursday and Friday. Seems to me to be a much more sensible way to handle this. The way that this schedule is set up in Lacey, students are going to be going on, the A group is going to go on Monday, then the B group on Tuesday, then the A group back on Wednesday, then on Thursday, the B group, and then Fridays, they're going to alternate. The schedule seems to me to be designed to infect as many people as possible. And I understand that that's probably not the fact, but that's what it appears to me to be. Finally, I'm concerned about the teachers and the rest of the school staff. My understanding is that students are supposed to attend school up until 12:30, but then the teachers have to stay in the school buildings until 2:15, and I'm really not clear about why that is. So if you could address some of those issues, I'd really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Just making sure my microphone is on. Fantastic. So, thank you. And I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, sir. Mr.?
Stemel. Bill Stemel.
Stemel. Thank you. Mr. Stemel, you raised some really good points, and I can tell you that we've been talking about all of those things extensively. In fact, we just had a big meeting on Monday. We've addressed all of them, and it's not to say that your points aren't valid. They are, but the governor has ordered schools to open. And the only reason that we wouldn't or couldn't open is because we could not ensure the safety of our, the health and safety of our students and our staff. But we've taken extensive measures to follow the guidelines that have been provided to us by the Department of Education, and that's all in our plan. That plan is changing every day, and it changes accordingly, according to the information that becomes available to us from the Ocean County Health Department, the CBC, the Department of Education, and the Governor's Task Force. You know, I understand your concern for the students. We are as well. You're concerned about the teachers. We are as well. There is a schedule for each of the schools, and the time that you said doesn't apply to all the schools. And then it's on our website, each of the schools has a different schedule, but the reason why we're having an early dismissal is to allow time for thorough cleaning and to give our teachers the opportunity to plan for the next day. And the next day is going to look very different than what it has looked like in the past because on any given day, teachers are going to be instructing students that are in front of them, students that are sitting in front of a computer, and sometimes both at the same time. And so that's why we did an early dismissal day, to allow for extra cleaning and to give teachers time for planning. We did take a look at making sure that we had adequate ventilation, but you know, listen, I'm going to agree with you. Time will tell. We don't know what the winter months are going to look like. A little bit later, if you stay for the second portion of our meeting, I'm going to talk about those things in more detail, if you wish to stick around.
Yeah, I would, but yeah, I understand your point about the early dismissal, and I agree. That makes a lot of sense. What doesn't make sense to me is that if you're dismissing the students at 12:30 so that the building can be cleaned, are you going to be cleaning around the teachers? You know, why is it necessary for them to stay in the building while it's being cleaned? They can plan just as easily at home as they can in the school. Correct?
Well, that's a decision. That's correct, but that's a decision we made collaboratively, and there are a lot of reasons for that, and I can't possibly get into every single one of them, but in the end, that's the schedule we came up with, and we felt that that was the best way that teachers could plan for the next day, not to mention that, you know, there's a contractual obligation for our teachers to complete their work, and we're trying to provide as much normalcy in that contractual obligation as possible, but at the same time, you know, for teachers to be able to be around each other and, you know, work together during common planning time. And so that was another primary reason, that can share resources and just make sure that they're ready for instruction for the next day.
Okay, sure. You know, they're bound by their contract, I'm sure of that, and if their health is threatened as a result, that's, I guess, something they'll have to negotiate in next year's I don't understand why the schedule was adopted the way that it was with the A group Monday, B group Tuesday, and, you know, this, and the alternating Fridays.
Yeah, and that was another good point that you made. We spent a lot of time looking at different models. We created five subcommittees to talk about a variety of focus areas, and choosing a model was probably at the crux of that conversation. And we looked at that AA closed, BB schedule. The problem with that schedule is that student that's in the A group, you know, if they, if they're meeting with their teachers on Monday, Tuesday, and then we close on Wednesday, and then Thursday, Friday is the B group, that A group isn't going to see their teachers for five days, and that's a long time. So we definitely considered that option, but what we did is we weighed the pros and the cons of each. And, you know, I'm hearing that a lot, like Berkeley's doing this, and Barnegat's doing that, and Central Regional's doing this, but the fact of the matter is, is that every school district is a different size, different grade level configurations, their buildings are different sizes, and this plan, the planning phases of all this, was not a one-size-fits-all. And what works in Berkeley might not necessarily work in Lacey, and vice versa. So, you know, we did weigh all those options. We did take a look at the pros and cons.
Okay, well, that's, that's good. I'm glad to hear that. The one point that I'd like to again make about this schedule, though, is that if a student is infected, okay, we know that there's asymptomatic transmission, and that can be from children. So if a student is infected, they're not necessarily going to show a rise in temperature right away. Taking their temperature is a nice idea, but it's not really going to make things very safe. And by having it this way, if that student comes to, if an asymptomatic student comes to school on Monday, then on Wednesday, they may not have a fever yet, but they may still be transmitting disease. You know, if you do it the other way, the Berkeley way, that student comes to work, comes to school on Monday, and yes, maybe they're, you don't know that they have COVID, but at least there's a five-day gap after they leave the school before they come back again, at which time, maybe they'll show a temperature rise, and you can, you can try to pin things down.
Right. Well, listen, I mean, we can certainly debate all the different options, and like I said, we explored the one that you're talking about, but we came up with a model. This is the model we're going to implement, and we have processes in place to address students and staff who test positive. And again, I'm going to talk about that a little bit later.
One final issue. Again, to compare other school districts, they're different sizes, their buildings are different. Tom's River, for example, has opted for all, no classroom instruction. And my understanding is that there's about 139 other school districts in the state that have opted to go virtual completely. And I'm not really clear on why it's appropriate for us to send our students as potential guinea pigs to determine whether or not this is going to be safe. It just seems to me the safer option is to go along with the other 139 districts that have opted for pure virtual.
Right. Well, first, I certainly am never going to refer to our students as guinea pigs. Second, like I said earlier, not opening is not an option as per the governor's orders. And the only reason that we could say that we would go all virtual is if we can't ensure the safety of our students and staff, and we've put in protocols in place to ensure that our students and our staff are safe, namely, one of them is doing the hybrid cohort learning model. I can't speak for Tom's River, no more than I can speak for any other school district. They're much larger than we are. I suspect that, you know, I had to guess, they have perhaps some staffing issues, and you know, I'm going to talk about that a little bit later as well. You know, the regulations that have been put in place for the FFCRA, which stands for the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, has made it possible for teachers and staff, all staff, I should say, to ask for a medical leave or an accommodation under ADA. Again, I'm going to talk about that a little bit later, but perhaps that's the reason. I can't speak for Tom's River. I can only speak for Lacey.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stemel, for your comments. I just wanted to address the other six people who have their hands up. Not that that was inappropriate conversation, but it would have been more geared towards the general section of our meeting. So if anyone else doesn't have a specific question about an agenda item, you know, a list of bills or transfer, something like that, if you could lower your hand and wait until the regular session of our meeting. All right. At this time, we'll recognize Anthony Rizzoli. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment on agenda items only.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Riggs, for a point of order that was appropriate from the previous speaker, and thank you for taking that initiative and letting everybody know that, in fact, there will be another meeting following this that's open and with more options for people to address. I have a specific question in reference to New Business under the Agenda number 16, okay? And it is Policy Number P 1648 and P 164802. Now, Vanessa, you and I have had some conversation in reference as to where to find it. Thank you very much for giving me that instruction so I could review it in advance. I understand it's a first reading, but my concerns in reference to the policy come that I do not believe that there is enough specific language to address transportation of extracurricular activities. And what I'm saying is if the football team, the soccer team, the track team are being transported by bus, I don't know if there's enough language to satisfy a parent that, you know, precautions will be taken to ensure that the athletes, student athletes, will in fact be protected boarding, playing the game, or the event, meet, whatever, getting back on the bus after the event, okay, that they would have to go through another, you know, check after the event because they've been exposed to athletes and other venues, and then coming back. Other thing is who's going to make sure that the student athletes boarding the bus besides the bus driver is okay to board the bus? Will it be the coach's responsibility? Is there volunteer parents? And if there are parents, have they been qualified to make sure that the kids are in fact safe boarding, disembarking, and then reloading on the bus after an event? I just don't think that the state has provided enough insurance to the parents that student athletes, you know, eight o'clock at night coming back from a track meet are safe, and that we haven't put in our policies proper precautions to address those unusual events. If you think it's right, Mr. Riggs, you're the policy guy.
I'm reading through it now as we're going. Go ahead.
You know, you're the superintendent. If you guys think it's okay, then fine, but it was just an observation I made, you know, in reading that policy under, like I said, New Business Item Number 16, and I felt I had to say something with the first reading. So if there's other parents that feel, or you guys feel, there should be more added to the policy, that in fact you do so before it becomes finalized. The other thing is, and I don't believe this is the proper time to bring it up, but I want to give Mr. Peters and Mr. De George a little heads up. I'm going to be asking about ventilation systems in our schools and what precautions we have taken. So during your break, if you want to put together something to address those issues on specifics, I'd be willing to listen to what you have to say. That's all I have at this time. Thank you very much for your attention.
So I was reading through the transportation policy. So I was in on those emails too, with the ones when you were going back and forth. How did you like reading through that policy, by the way? That whole entire thing? It was pretty crazy, right? But anyway, so transportation, as far as transportation goes, it's saying, you know, that we're going to do social distancing when we can, but you're always going to be wearing face coverings if you're on the bus. And to expand on what Mr. Stemel, the point Mr. Stemel was making right before you would be, if they did go to that football game and were inadvertently exposed, it wouldn't show up on a thermometer anyway on a temperature check within, what, an hour? So I don't understand how we could do that anyway. I wouldn't really know how we could tighten that up anyway.
Okay.
But I'm, but I'm open to your question.
I want to bring it up because I didn't want it just to let, let it go without, you know, being aware of, maybe there is something, maybe there's not something, maybe when we get instantaneous testing, that'd be inputted into our policy. Maybe the policy should say that if there is in fact any other new testing devices or systems that are put in place, that we use those, you know, or we look to use those to protect the kids more. That's all.
And I will go into this a little bit later too, when we talk about policies, but you noticed these are rather long, these three policies.
I know.
The reason being is Strauss Esme, who wrote it up for us, thought it would be easier to just do it as one policy rather than, you know, when this all ends, whenever this ends, getting, doing away with six or seven policies. It was just a single that we were working on to try to streamline it.
Okay.
But thank you for your comment, as always, Mr. Rizzoli. Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Jennifer S. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment We'll give Jennifer S. just another minute here. You can unmute your microphone, just click to ask you to unmute and make your public Mr. Riggs, seeing no response from Jennifer, will, will you allow me to take her down for now? Yes, Jennifer, if you want, when we come back around to the regular portion, if you want to try again, please. Okay, Mr. Riggs, seeing none at this time.
Okay, going to open up to Board Member and Superintendent comments. Let's go to Superintendent first. Dr. Clark, do you have anything?
I do not. I will make my comment later on.
Okay. And then I'm going to go into Board Member. We'll do it member by member, and I just wanted to just, you know, explain to the crowd that, you know, this is one of our few opportunities where we actually get to all talk to each other without the sunshine laws, you know, getting in the way of what we do. So this is one of the few instances where we're actually all together in the same room and can talk, so a little bit of back and forth is expected. So I'm going to go ahead. I got, hold on, I have to reduce my screen to see who's who, and I'm going to start right on the top left. Mrs. De Senza, please.
No comments at this time.
No comment at this time? All right. I'm going to go right down the line.
There we go. I wanted to bring up to the Board for consideration reorganizing the way we vote when we get to the public portion, the agenda portion of the meeting, not, excuse me, this is the agenda portion of the meeting, the regular portion of the meeting, and we're going to vote on the items. I feel that when we take our agenda and we vote, right now, looking at tonight's, we'll probably vote in maybe four or five segments, and it lumps so many things together, it becomes very difficult for the public to keep up with it, and sometimes for us to keep up with it. If we took the first section, just Section A, if we started with that as an example, if we could break that down into minutes, bills, bookkeeping, which tonight, there's an item in the agenda about, I can't think of the correct accounting term, but putting together the numbers, and the income purchases, there's tuition policy, and I just think that if we, if we sort of reorganize that a little bit into things like that, we could, we could then ask for comment. Somebody has a comment about what they're voting on, somebody needs to abstain on something, it would all make a little bit more sense and flow a little bit better, and I just like everyone, I'd like to bring it up for consideration.
Okay, understood. I, I don't want to switch it up on the fly tonight, if that's all right with everyone, but we'll definitely talk about it if that's what you want to do. We can break it down to our committees and do it that way, but not tonight, though, please, if you would.
Oh, no, no, I wasn't suggesting tonight. I was, I was, I was bringing it up to ask the Board to consider it for the future.
Okay.
As a going-forward thing. No, no, that, doing it, if we tried it on the fly tonight, I know it would happen.
Please not. Please not. Thank you, Mr. Scanlon.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything else?
No, the other things I will bring up will be during the next portion of the meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Riggs.
Mrs. De Senza.
I would just like to say I agree with Mr. Scanlon.
Okay.
Same with me. I think we had too many things clumped together, and when we're sitting here with all the papers, it's hard to know what we're voting on, so if we can break it down into smaller sections, it might be easier for us.
Okay, well, future unclump. Got it. All right. Why don't we just keep going with you? Mrs. McAvoy.
Hi. I just wanted to bring up, and this is something new that we haven't talked about, but since everybody in the Board is here, and we'd have to talk about it in committee meetings probably. Dr. Clark, is, I know a couple of years ago, you brought up substitute pay, and you did raise substitute pay, but I would like to talk about that in the committees next month because I know it's so hard to get substitutes, especially last year here in Lacey, so it might be something probably in the Finance Committee to talk about if possible. Okay?
Yeah, I think Finance would be appropriate.
Right. And the only other thing, Monday, a lot of the people weren't on that are on now. I brought up busing because so many people, staff members, and people in the public were asking me about busing, and I didn't know, so I brought it up Monday night at the Agenda meeting, and Mr. De George said that everyone that paid for busing last year was getting a refund that were in the bills for this month at, from March to June, and then I just want to reiterate that, he also said that since the students will only be going half of the year, when the bill comes, they will only pay half of the busing. So I just wanted to reiterate that, and that's it. Thank you, Mr. Riggs.
You're welcome, Mrs. McAvoy. Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. I have no agenda comments at this time.
No agenda at all. Okay. Mr. Polino, if you would, please.
Anything? I have no comment at this time.
Okay. Now, you froze up there, but we got you. Seeing we're done with Board Member and Superintendent comments, Mr. De George, if you would, please.
Certainly, resolution to recess into private session reads as follows. Be it resolved that a private session be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential legal matters, specifically the current case load. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of private session is estimated to be approximately 30 minutes, after which the Board shall reconvene and proceed with business. Action may be taken. Motion, please.
Mrs. De Senza, motion for private session.
Second. This is, this is, Ms. McAvoy?
Yes.
Welcome to private session.
Okay. See you guys soon.
Okay, see you guys soon.
Okay, Mr. Riggs, we're waiting for a few more people.
Yeah, I don't know if Skip's back yet. Is he? Ed's not there and Skip's not there. But it's all right, we can go ahead, they'll be back in a moment. All right, so restarting the, there's, see, there's Ed showing up now. Okay, restarting the public portion, the, the regular portion of the meeting. We are moving on to report of the superintendent.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Riggs, and thank you for filling in tonight for Mrs. Downing. So welcome, everybody, to the August board meeting. My comments tonight are going to be rather long, but I do want to share updated information for our families and staff regarding the status of school reopening. First, it is unfortunate that we had technical difficulties on Monday or even that we are back in a virtual setting in the first place. However, as with many things, we are bound by Governor Murphy's Executive Order 173, which took effect August 4th, limiting indoor gatherings to 25 people, which we know we bound from 100. There were exceptions to that executive order, but board meetings unfortunately were not one of them, so here we are. I know that many people are probably wondering, well, if you, if you can't have an in-person board meeting, how can you possibly consider opening school? And that's a great question, and it's been asked many times. So enter Executive Order 175, and if you scroll down to the 12th, whereas, there are 30, by the way. I guess I'm being a little sarcastic. There, there's a statement there that I'm fairly certain everyone will agree with. And that is the New Jersey Department of Education's determination that, quote, "Reopening schools for in-person instruction is critical in facilitating the social and emotional health of students." And that, quote, "Schools serve a critical function for the state's workforce in that they provide safe supervision of children during the day, allowing parents and guardians to work and move the economy forward," end quote. The part that frustrates me, and I know I'm not alone, is I have to assume that every other school leader and board member and administrator in New Jersey is frustrated with, the part that they're frustrated in the executive order is the part that says that school districts may need additional time to properly implement the health and safety precautions necessary to reopen school. Unfortunately, what the governor's guidance, the most recent guidance, what that did was to pass liability to school districts and boards of education. And in that process, I believe it pitted districts against one another. And even worse, it pitted communities against educators, and that's unfortunate. I share all of this information because it's important for our school community to understand that, that decision to open school, and more importantly, when to open school, was not an easy decision. And unless we are, we were able to rewind back to early March, pre-pandemic, normal, normal school as we know it is not going to happen in the foreseeable future. I truly hope I'm wrong, I do. So what does all this mean? On August 4th, I communicated our reopening plans with our families. And I asked families to complete a return to school commitment form so that we have an understanding of the population of students who will return to school in the hybrid as described and have an understanding of the population of the students whose parents chose the full-time, all-remote option. So Mr. Leidl, if you could show the first slide, please. All right, so what you're going to see is, based on the data that we have from the 3,101 families who submitted responses, 67% indicated that they chose the hybrid AB cohort model and 33% chose the full-time, remote-only instruction model. Now, one thing I want to say is that we are missing approximately 1,000 responses. And the principals are in the process, even today, to call those families who haven't responded. And I know that I said that if families didn't submit a response, that we were going to assume that they were choosing the hybrid in-person model. But the principals are going to take an extra step. So I, I'm going to assume that these numbers are going to change, logic stands to reason. So that's our, our current data. And in our planning procedures, we, we carefully planned this hybrid AB cohort model and the remote instruction model. And we are prepared to do both. The question, and I alluded to it earlier, is when? We have planned and we have pivoted many times, trying to keep pace with the guidance that has been provided to us. This past Monday, we held a meeting with representatives of the board, members of the Lacey Township Education Association, which are teachers and administrators, to consider what our outstanding issues are. And it was these outstanding issues that forced us to, to delay opening by two weeks. And I'm going to go over what they are. So the first thing is that, like many other school districts, we ordered a tremendous amount of personal protective equipment, also known as PPE. And the, the PPE included face covering, face shield, hand sanitizer, disinfectant wipes, level-two isolation gowns, gloves, plexiglass dividers, desk dividers, and signs that direct students and staff were to walk, to wash their hands, and remind them to keep their masks on. Most of what we ordered has arrived, but not all of it has. And we don't have any guarantees that it's going to be in our district by the time school opens on September 8th. The second is technology. So again, like many other school districts, we are using the digital divide grant monies, funds, to purchase Chromebooks for students in, in grades K through 4. Unfortunately, those Chromebooks are not expected to arrive in districts until late November, and I'm hoping earlier. The extra two weeks are going to allow us time to work with those families who need technology to support both the hybrid and remote instruction. And again, the principals are working on that every day, along with our IT team, our informational technology team, and our technology teachers. The third is training. When we do open school, we are going to do things that we have never done before. One of those things is temperature and health screening. So delaying school opening is going to allow us time to provide staff members who will be conducting those health screenings, the appropriate training that they're going to need for this new task. And there are other professional development topics that we'll have to cover. And then finally, we're still reviewing staff requests for medical leaves under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, also known as the FFCRA, and accommodations under the ADA, which is the Americans, the Americans Disabilities Act. So both have created challenges for districts to be able to fully staff their districts. And I suspect that was a primary, a primary reason for why so many districts have recently announced full remote instruction rather than opening. And I can't speak for those districts, and I alluded that earlier when a member of the community asked that question. I can only speak for our district. So after taking all of those things into consideration, we have decided to alter our school reopening plan as follows. So Mr. Leidl, if you can show the next screen. And this information is posted on our website. So the schedule moving forward for the Lacey Township School District is as follows. September 1st through the 3rd, our faculty and staff are going to engage in professional development to start the school year, which will include screening and temperature-taking training, among other things. But, you know, there are other professional development topics that we have to cover, and it's a lot. So on September 8th, school is going to start on the remote learning model for all students. And then on September 14th, school is going to start in person for students who require specific specialized programming. And these are our autistic behavioral and multiple disabled programs. And details about these programs is forthcoming. And by the way, I, I know some questions came up. You know, what are those students going to be doing from September 8th through the 14th? And that's going to be a time for transition, where the case managers are going to be reaching out to those families to go over medical requirements, work with our medically fragile students, among other things. And then on September 4th, I'm sorry, September 21st will be the start of the hybrid AB cohort model for all those students who elected that learning model and will continue for remote, remote students. So we recognize this shift in planning places a tremendous hardship on our parents, we truly do. However, the uncertainties created by this pandemic and the continued changes coming from the New Jersey Department of Education and the governor's office force us to pivot yet again to ensure the health and safety of all of our students and staff. We are in the process of creating a frequently asked questions document, or FAQ. We will post that to our website. We are adding to it based on the questions that are coming in in the email that I posted in the presentation. So we encourage you to send those questions in. We will continue to revise that document as the questions come in. So I know I shared a lot of information. You can find it all on our website and on our Facebook page and on our Twitter account. I am going to cover one last topic, and it's a question that's come up in the last couple of days. And it's, I'm certain it's a question that is weighing heavy on everyone's mind. And that is what happens when a student or staff member tests positive for COVID-19? So last Thursday, the New Jersey Department of Edu, I'm sorry, the New Jersey Department of Health released recommendations for local health departments to assist school districts in addressing this situation. While the document is 19 pages, I am going to highlight the response that districts will be required to take if and when students or staff become ill. So Mr. Leidl, if you can go to the next slide. So on the left there, I picked this language up right from the guidance, and it says, "This is one tool that can inform the decision-making process for school districts when considering when remote learning may have to happen." This information right now is posted on our website, the entire 19-page document. And it is going to be part of our FAQ document. I do want to draw your attention on the left side, which is the second to, the, the second from the bottom on the left side, where it says, "The scenario is going to be two or more cases, what happens when two or more cases are identified within 14 days that occur across multiple classrooms, and a clear connection between cases or two-way suspected or confirmed case of COVID-19 cannot be easily identified." So that means perhaps a student in Mrs. Smith's class, you know, let's, let's, I'm going to pick on Cedar Creek for a moment, but kindergarten, a first grader in Mrs. Smith's class tests positive for COVID-19. And there are procedures for that as well, and the response districts have to have. But then, within the 14-day period, a fourth-grade student tests positive, and we can establish no connection between those two students. Working with the Ocean County Health Department, it more than likely will be their recommendation, based on what we're seeing here, will be to close school for 14 days. And I'm not going to go through all of these scenarios, but I have provided them for, for our, our community on our website. And again, this information just came out on Thursday. And this is what I was talking about earlier, that, you know, information is, just seems to be released every single day. And, you know, 19 pages is a lot to read. And so we're trying to keep up with it and trying to inform our community to the best of our ability. So again, we'll be on our, on our, on our FAQ document already on our website. So we're going to continue to consider many factors. We're going to work closely with the Ocean County Health Department. And, you know, just, I cannot stress this enough, closure is a decision that will be made by school administrators in consultation with the Ocean County Health Department. We will never take it upon ourselves to say, "We're closing school, we're closing the district." That is definitely not something we would do. We would work closely with those people. And, you know, we've, we've had very good relationships with them. I'm going to transition yet again because I know another question that our families have is what about instruction? What is instruction going to look like? What are student schedules going to look like? And if, hopefully you've had the opportunity to read the information that I have posted on our website about how much work has gone into planning student schedules and instruction. And it's going to look very different from the way it looked in the fall because, I said it once, I'm going to say it 100 times, you know, we did in two days, which should have taken two years to plan and implement. But we've had time now. And I'm not going to say that it's, you know, we've just miraculously come up with this fantastic model. It's a work in progress, but we have come a long way. So I am going to turn it over to District Supervisor Mr. Zalinski, who's going to talk about the student schedules and the instructional time blocks for both remote and in-person instruction. So Mr. Zalinski, if you're ready, and Mr. Leidl already flipped over to the next slide.
Good evening, if you can't hear me, somebody wave their hand. My name is William Zalinski, I'm the district supervisor here for Lacey Township Schools. Dr. Clark invited me here this evening to briefly go over what our models of instruction are going to look like from grades K to 12. I didn't create any new slides or any new presentation here because I wanted everybody to be able to reference back to anything that I'm saying. You can always reach us at the school. You can email me directly, or you can email the website that appears on our LSTD screen when you go to look at our recovery plan. I, I'll, I'll piggyback on what Dr. Clark had said, that we didn't miraculously solve all the problems of instruction when we moved to a remote model, and we are a work in progress. But we have a very rich history of remote learning in Lacey Township Schools. We've actually won awards for it. One of the first schools to offer online instruction. We're one of the first schools to require online instruction. We are one of the first schools in all of the state to develop a one-to-one initiative. We are one-to-one grades 5 to 12, and we will be one-to-one grades K to 12 by the end of this calendar year, by the time January 1st hits. When we went off to our remote instruction back in March, shocking as it was, and imperfect as it was, we were able to do that pivot. We adopted learning management systems for the high school and for the lower grades. If you don't have high school-level kids at this point, we use Canvas, which is used by every college in the state of New Jersey, as far as I know. We adopted it early on so that our kids would have a seamless transition when they went from high school to college. And we have built upon that to develop our online learning model. Tom, if you could click on the high school link there that you have. All these things can be found on our website under Appendix N when you look at our recovery plan. One of the developments that is different from what we did in March, and I'll go to this, the differences that we're going to see in the grades. One of the big developments that came about when we talked to our stakeholders, when we talked to our parents, when we talked to our administrators, when we talked to our teachers, was that we developed a synchronous model of instruction so that no matter where you are going to be located, whether it is home or in school, starting now on the 21st, you will get what is close to the same level of instruction, no matter where you're located. Of course, technology allows us to do that. Our one-to-one technology allows us to do it a little bit better. And I'll talk a little bit about the differences when we get to the K to 4 level, when we get there. The biggest thing that parents asked for, and what we learned in March, April, and May, was parents really asked for a set schedule for their students, their children, who could handle a set schedule, who are able to autonomously log in themselves, use the provided Chromebooks or Chromebooks that they have at home, or computers that they have at home, develop a set schedule so that every single day, no matter where you're located, whether it's in school or at home, you know it's school. You see this in these time blocks here, and I'm not going to have Mr. Leidl scroll too far because it kind of makes me sick when he does it, and I'm assuming it would be everybody else too. You'll notice that when we have developed our classes for this year, your children at home will be logging in at the same time as our students are receiving the instruction, whether they are an A student, a B student, or a remote-only student. This is the high school example. This is the high school example. They are 75-minute blocks. Consequently, we have also, for the high school parents, we've adopted a four-by-four schedule, so, and at the middle school as well. So students will only be concentrating on four subjects for the first semester and four subjects for the spring semester. I know I'm getting a little complicated, but we did that to lessen the burden on our students, so they could concentrate heavily on four subjects at a time instead of eight subjects at a time. And we're hoping that that's going to make a big difference, because they are transitioning from home to school, school to home. Hopefully, like Dr. Clark said, we'll all be back to school, but we have to be prepared for the opposite to occur, and we're driven home by something that can happen during a worldwide pandemic. So students will always follow, so now I'm going to speak to the different levels. And without making Mr. Liddell scroll too far, this is a high school example. This is grade nine to 12, the one that he has on the screen here, and you'll see that we separate them between the face-to-face students, the ones that'll be in school, and the students who will be remote only. And remember, when they're remote, they can be remote every day, or they might be on their B day and their home, because we had to, of course, split the classes in half due to social distancing requirements, and we really had to lessen the burdens on the building, because, as you can attest to, when you were probably in high school, parents, you know, we had pretty crowded classrooms. That has not gone away. We still have large class sizes in, throughout districts in New Jersey and in Lacey Township. So the 75-minute blocks, of course, are broken up. Students will follow the same schedule, whether they're in person and home. The idea being that the technology worked well in the spring, where classes, hopefully, will be able to come together at the beginning of every class period. So when you notice the first 20 minutes, and it doesn't have to be 20, it can be less, it can be 10, it can be more if it runs over, teachers will log into a Google Meet with the students who are at home. Of course, the students who are face-to-face with them will get the live instruction, and they will set up the lesson, that 75 minutes of the day. So after the setup, they'll go into the lesson. Students who are home, if possible, will stay logged in, but more likely, they'll find the lesson either in Canvas if they're a high school student, or in Google Classroom if they're a grade five to eight student. That's where they'll find an interactive lesson, they'll find lesson materials, and the idea being is that the students will work for that 40 to 50 minutes while they're at home, on a set schedule on that lesson, coming back together at the end, when you see the last 15 minutes on the screen that Mr. Liddell is showing us, where there's an interactive summary enclosure, and that can be varied. There's live discussion boards, there's not-live discussion boards, there can be in-person Google Meets. The idea being, the overarching idea being, is that it's a synchronous level of instruction, so that when you leave that class period on an A day, a B day, I'm a remote-only student, I've received at least a measure of the same instruction every single day, whether, no matter where I'm located. The remote learners, of course, will complete their activities online, and then the face-to-face learners are going to complete their activities, of course, in person. And that's the overarching idea, and that's what it's going to be for grades five to 12. But Mr. Liddell, if you could go to the middle school briefly, and then we'll go to the Milpon, the grades five and six briefly. And I might be moving quickly. All this is under Appendix N for you to review, and of course, we're always available for questions, if you have very specific instructional questions as we move along. And I've answered all the questions. We've done P P E questions, we've done instructional questions, we've talked about how it's going to look, you know, from various places. Now, the one caveat to all this is there will be some courses that will be all remote, no matter where they're located, and that's just because of staffing, that's because there are groups of students who might be grouped because they're staying home for the entire semester or the entire quarter, because we break it up by quarters. So there, there might be one caveat here, too, where everything is done remotely, but there will be live instruction included, using Google Meets, using Canvas, and using interactive activities that way. So when you look at, so if you compared, if you had a high school student and you had a middle school student, you'll notice that Block 1 is different times. So the high school Block 1 starts at 7:05, the middle school Block 1 starts at 7:35, very much like when we did, you know, just live face-to-face school. We're expecting the four blocks. The students will move from block to block to block, no matter where they're located. Of course, if they're at the middle school and high school, they'll switch classes. If they're home, they'll take a stretch break, and they'll go into Block 2, and they'll get their second class of the day, whatever that may be, according to the master's schedule that they'll receive, probably in about two weeks. We'll have those schedules completely finalized. Of course, there are large challenges we've had there as well, trying to craft schedules for all of our students. Mr. Liddell, if you go to grades five and six, there's going to be a difference there that I want to show for the Milpon parents. So when you get to grades five and six, they operate a little bit differently. You're not going to see times that I can post right now, but students will, so you see the approximately 70 minutes there for an ELA instructional block, once students receive their, their schedules in the mail and online, probably online, they probably won't be in the mail. So they will then, we will have established times for the Milpon students. So they'll go from, they'll have an ELA instructional block, and if you scroll down a little bit, Mr. Liddell, there's a math instructional block, and if you keep scrolling down, you'll see science and social studies. Each of those blocks is different times, but those grade five and six students will have set times that they'll be sitting at, if they're home, where they'll be sitting down at their Chromebooks, and they'll be logging in, and they'll be operating throughout their school day, which I believe Milpon ends about 1 o'clock. So they start at about 8:00, and they end about 1:00. The middle school does 7:30 to about 12:30, and the high school does 7:00 to about 12:00. Okay, the last component would be the K to four. If you could click on that piece, Mr. Liddell. The K to four is a little bit different. We've worked probably the hardest at the K to four, because they had the least experience with online instruction, and that's by design. When we talk about K to four students, and we talk about online instruction, that's really not something that occurs together. When we talk about our youngest learners, and we talk about students who need lots of attention, K to four comes up where you have that teacher, that K to four specialist that can do all those different subjects, that is that teacher in the room, that is that, that loving teacher in the room. K to four is a little bit different. The challenge there is that we know that, for the most part, at least the K and 1, 2 would be maybe the dividing line, they're going to have trouble logging in at set times a day without parental or grandparent help or caretaker help. So those lessons, when they're B day or remote day kids and they're home, they're going to be waiting for somebody to help them. So those lessons will be teacher-created videos, there'll be very specific Google Meets where everybody can make that time, and it'll be pre-announced. There'll be interactive activities using a lot of the online platforms that we have that will be set in Google Classroom. So parents will have the ability to log in with their students when it's appropriate for them to do so. Now, we know there'll be students out there, especially in grades three and four, they'll be able to do it themselves, and I can envision over time that the synchronous model that I spoke of, of grades five to 12, will be extended to those grades as well. I can't speak so much for K 1, 2, but certainly three and four, we'd like to see some of that occur, but in the beginning, we know that's not going to occur, where it's going to be a lot of stuff, where you can log in at any time as a grade K to four student, and you'll get the help of a parent at home to help you with the materials, help you move on, but, but moving away from the pile of worksheets that was in desperation, of course, in March, because we had 48 hours to plan, where it's much more interactive lessons, where they can rewind, move forward with their parents, review material, and they just don't, aren't able to log in with the class at, at that exact time of day, like the grades five to 12 will be doing. So that's going to be the difference there when we talk about the youngest of the learners, but that will be developing over time as well, to develop into that synchronous model of instruction, you know, but here it's more asynchronous, where they're going to log in at times that are much more convenient for them. So that, that'll be the difference there as we move forward. And then, of course, come, hopefully, like Dr. Clark said, November, December, when we become a true K to 12, one-to-one district, we'll be able to, to take the next leap forward. The students for grades seven and eight, they'll be carrying their Chromebooks back and forth to school. Grades five and six will be leaving them at home, and of course, when K to four is issued, they'll be leaving them at home as well, because really, when they come to school, we want them to get as much hands-on with their teachers. They won't be burdened with having to worry about Chromebooks, they won't be worried about the technology like that. It's really going to be that base, hands-on, interactive learning, face-to-face learning, where they have their teacher in front of them, and that'll be the difference when we talk about our youngest of learners. I'm just looking at my notes. I think I talked about a lot here, a lot of information. It's a huge challenge for our teachers. We're going to be seeing them, of course, September 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. Our P D development will be solely focused on protection for them and their students, and of course, how to create this hybrid model of instruction, where we are serving our public, which we know who they are, and, and we're desperate to do that, to make sure that they're getting the best education that we can provide. So that, that pretty much, Dr. Clark, that pretty much ends where I was. If you have, if I didn't hit anything, please tell me.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinski, and, you know, I just want to add, you need a, a great overview. Some of our parents don't know the difference between synchronous and asynchronous, so let me just expand on that a little bit. So asynchronous learning is defined as learning that occurs without real-time instruction, meaning that the student is not watching live instruction going on in the classroom. So that's asynchronous. So synchronous would be the opposite, where the students are logged in, watching the instruction that is going on in the classroom with the students that are sitting there in front of the teachers. And I know we, you know, as educators, we throw these terms around because we know them, but not all of our parents do. And in fact, one of the things I'm thinking about doing is adding a glossary of terms, per se, to our F A Q documents, so we'll work on that as well. But thank you, Mr. Zalinski. Maybe you can stick around for a bit to see if there are any questions when the public makes comments. All right, thank you so much.
Dr. Clark, real quick, while we saw Mr. Zalinski on the side note, adding to that also, Mr. Zalinski, I mean, you're in the profession, and you use a lot of acronyms. Could you explain, we have 100 and almost 200 guests, could you possibly explain them, what ELA is, what one-to-one is, what the difference between Canvas is and Google Classroom real quick, just to give them, you use those, you use those acronyms a lot, if you could just explain to them real quick?
So I'll give it, I'll kind of give it to you exactly what you just said. I'll, I'll give it to you in that order. So when, when you see ELA, English Language Arts, would be English class, mathematics, of course, science, social studies, but that's the ELA, because really, it developed over, I guess, probably in the last decade, where the English language, like, they wanted to make it much more rich, other than we're just teaching you novels, and you learn the novel, and you write about the novel. It's much more rich than that, and they put that together in, in a term called English Language Arts, is what developed there. I think your next comment was, when we talk about Canvas and we talk about Google Classroom, so what we learned early on, and we must be in about our seventh or eighth year of using student interactive platforms, when you say Canvas, colleges started using platforms where students could interact with each other, using computers and using laptops, and posting materials, posting assignments, discussions that they could have online without ever calling a person or being alive together, and what has that developed into is really a, a learning system. We pay for it. Canvas is the one that we use for the high school. Google Classroom is the one that we use for grades K to eight. They're different. Canvas has a lot more adult-like features. It's why we picked it. We picked it early on because we thought it was a very good system. Lo and behold, I think about a year or two after we picked it, all of the New Jersey State Colleges went to using it. So we were very happy about that, because students who get to college were coming back to us, saying, "Yeah, I knew how to navigate Canvas, and all of my friends in college couldn't do it, and I had to help them." Google Classroom is used at the younger grades, because it is a little simpler, a little easier to use. It is free for the most part, although we pay for an upgraded version, but Google has provided that to all schools, and it is universal. Students come from other schools, knowing Google Classroom, and it's used probably in a majority of schools in New Jersey. I think I hit all your terms.
Thank you. I mean, I'm, I'm an educator myself. I knew all the terms, I just wanted to let the public hear that.
Of course, thank you. Thank you for putting that out.
Yeah, and Mr. Peters, that's a great suggestion. We'll add a glossary of terms to our F A Q as well. So thank you again, Mr. Zalinski. To end my comments tonight, I, I want to thank the L T A, the Board of Education, the Administration, our teachers, our staff, our central office staff, our secretarial staff, for their willingness to come together and make decisions that are going to best serve our students. Those decisions are going to continue to be made in the next coming days, the next coming weeks, and, and in the months to come. Finally, I, before I forget, I also want to thank Mrs. Scanlon for making a compelling presentation about the S A C position that was eliminated from the budget, and I just wanted Mrs. Scanlon and her constituents to know that we are taking your points into consideration and exploring some options to expand services for student assistance for the upcoming school year. And we're also looking to expand support for our school nurses, because we know, we know that their hands are going to be full. And so one of the things we're exploring is to bring on an extra nurse to assist the six and a half that we have. So that's it. That concludes my comments. Vice President Riggs, floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Dr. Clark and Mr. Zalinski, for that very thorough explanation. Thanks for sticking around, too, in case anyone asks questions. So we are going to move on to the public comment portion of tonight's meeting. This is the regular comments. So an audience member wishing to make a comment shall virtually raise his or her hand, and when called upon, state their name, address, or affiliation, and intention to make a statement. Comments shall be addressed to, tonight, the Vice President. Comments shall be made on one issue at a time. Comments shall be limited to five minutes, and no audience member will be recognized twice until all who wish to comment have been recognized. So I already see some hands raised, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Riggs. At this time, if you would raise your hand, if you'd like to participate in public comment, that only works if you have Zoom version 5.2 or later. You can alternately call in via phone line. That information was sent to you in the email with your registration. If you are calling in via phone line, star nine will raise your hand so that we can recognize you. So we'll get things started with Julianne Schlossrich. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Good afternoon. My name is Julianne Schlossrich. I'm the L T E A First Vice President. I'd like to start off, I'd really like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Ed and Administration. They've been working very hard on trying to safely open the school districts for children and staff, and anybody else who has to come into the building at any point in time. But even though everybody would like to be back at school, I believe that starting the school year remotely really is the best way to proceed for the health and well-being of the students and staff. If we were to open, and when school opens, it will only be a matter of time before somebody becomes sick, possibly hospitalized, or even worse. The gift of time will allow our district an opportunity to monitor what transpires in other districts across the county and state. It will also assist the district in dealing with the weekly guideline changes that are mandated by the government. It's important to remember, right now in New Jersey, it is still not safe for anybody to go to a movie, a concert, a play, the gym, or most importantly, for many, even indoor dining. While the state is constantly assessing what is safe, it is imperative that as Board of Education member, you too, reevaluate how COVID will impact our schools, to make sure that the decision to move to hybrid model or stay remote is based on the health and safety of students and staff in this district. I look forward to continue working with the district and its administration to make our schools safe and ready to educate our students. But as important as school is, and as much as everyone would like to go back to a pre-COVID-19 world, we must deal with the reality in front of us. I implore everyone to understand that in-person teaching is very important, but the health, safety of our children and staff must be the priority for everyone. I'd like to thank you for giving me a moment of your time.
Thank you very much for your comment. First Vice President Schlossrich. Thank you very much for your comment. First Vice President Schlossrich. Okay. At this time, we'll recognize Emery Leiter. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Can you hear me? Hi, guys. I'm Emery Leiter, from the woods of Bamber Lake. First, I want to thank you guys. I can't imagine, I don't know how you guys are doing it. Our governor is changing plans every day. One day he says one thing, another day he says another. So as always, I appreciate your efforts. With that being said, I was happy to get the email on August 4th with the three attachments. I printed out the 109-page document, because although, Ms. Dr. Clark, I appreciated your 20-minute video, I really wanted to comb through this to make a good decision. I am not afraid of this virus. I respect the virus, but I am not afraid of it. So I really would love to send my children to school, whatever days you'll have them. I have a lot of questions about the document, but I'm not going to go into them, because I'm not done reading it yet. But I do, I do just want to say, I think, two things. On page nine, it says, "No masks where social distancing can take place." And that made me super happy, because it's what I believe. And thank God, we live in a country still, as of today, where we all can still have choice. So on page nine, it says, "There's no masks where social distancing can take place." However, on page 63, which is one of the appendices, it says that masks are required at all times. So I don't understand that. And if you want me to wait, I will, but there's one other thing in the document that I'd like to talk about.
Well, let me, let me answer that question first. So you're right, that document is 109 pages. However, the guidance that, and I don't remember what date it was, but the guidance that we received from the governor changed, and forced us to change the document to say that masks are required at all times by both students and staff. So my secretary is in the process of going through that document to ensure that page nine and page 63 match. It sounds to me like we missed it, but without having the entire document here in front of me, I can't speak to that, but I did write down the two-page numbers that you gave me. But let me be clear, the guidance is, the directive, I should say, is that students will wear masks at all times, along with staff members. So originally, it was that students and staff were required to wear masks to and from school on the bus, entering and exiting, in the hallway, and when socially, social distancing couldn't be done. And that has since changed, so we will make sure to update our document to reflect that.
Okay. Thank you.
Good catch.
Thank you. That's my old secretarial skills, like jumping in there. I'm only halfway through this document, too, so the other thing that.
I applaud you for reading the whole thing.
Listen, girl, you know me. You know me. I'm going to read this document before I make a decision. Appendix A, page 44, the heading reads, "Protocols for High-Risk Students." But in the first paragraph of that heading, the last sentence, it reads, "In addition, the district will provide the following to high-risk staff who elect to report to work." Is that right? I mean, it's protocols for high-risk students, but the last sentence is, "In addition, it will provide these protocols for high-risk staff." I'm assuming that should be reading students as well. Again, it's printed page 44, under the heading of "Protocols for High-Risk Students."
Right. So, you know, I think what I'm going to ask you to do, Mrs. Leiter, is if you could email that to me, and I will absolutely take a look at it.
All right. Just to be clear. Now, walking away from this restart and recovery plan, when it first came, I, like I said, I was definitely wanting to read it and knew that between working six days a week, you know, we all have lives, and there's no way I was going to get able, was going to be able to read the whole thing by the required time. And although the storm was awful, I was a little thankful for it for a little more time, and then was told I could email my building principals, I have a daughter in high school and a daughter in Mill Pond, to let them know that I'll need more time. I just want to let you know that Mrs. Nemick emailed me back, which I appreciated, and even said, "Oh, make sure you say hi to Natalie for me." She told me, "Don't worry, let me know when you know." So I appreciated that, and I haven't heard from Mr. Brandis at all. Just little side notes. Again, pivoting, since we're using that phrase, I like it, makes me think of Friends pivot. Will substitutes be trained? You know I'm a substitute in the district for para, for duty aid, and that sort of thing. Will you be calling on us, and will there be training? Or will we just, you know, accept a post and report masked?
So that, that, yep, great question. And, you know, I mentioned earlier that we were going to explore some additional counseling, some additional nurse support. One of the other, other things that we talked about was perhaps making sure that we had some floating subs for last-minute coverages, because we know that this school year is going to be like none other. So we're exploring those options, but absolutely. In fact, Mrs. Scala and Mr. Zelinski and Mrs. Amos are the ones that take a look at our substitute manuals. And we have a substitute academy where we make, like, for example, last year, all of our substitutes had to, we had to make sure that our substitutes got training in ALIS protocols, and we successfully got that done. Yep, exactly. So absolutely, and that's an important part of, of, you know, making sure that our substitutes know what our plan looks like, what's in our plan, and making sure that they're prepared to step in on short notice. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Also, Dr. Clark.
And again, if.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, if you could just email me that last part that you talked about in Appendix A, I will, or just call me. You can call me, too. I will take a look at that.
I mean, I'd love to talk to you, and I'll email you if that's okay.
That's fine.
Moving forward, in Dr. Clark, you're, one of your slides, and it was posted on the website as well, and I think I saw it in the back. Anyway, when you say the case scenarios, like if two students test and blah, 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 that schools will be closed. And you, tonight cited, you said, "Oh, I'll use Cedar Creek as an example." So if it is at Cedar Creek, and you say schools will be closed, will Cedar Creek be closed, or will the district shut down?
Great question. So that, what I showed you on the slide says that the school will close if there are two cases within that 14-day period that can't be connected. However, we have been placed into risk zones. I forget the name of our zone, but we're in with Middlesex, Monmouth, and Ocean County. And what will happen is, the health departments will be monitoring case numbers. And if the case numbers in the three counties that, that we're in, that we're grouped in, if they decide that, that there's an outbreak, then they may order all school districts in those three counties to close. But again, that's going to be at the direction of the health department, and it will not be our call. So to answer your question, the example I gave, it would close the school down.
Okay. Good luck with all that. Yeah, I'm sorry. I just feel so bad for everybody. This is a lot for you guys to take on, especially when, you know, we're a town and nation divided. So it's equally frustrating for you all, or hard, not frustrating, but hard. On page 20, you guys talked about the pandemic.
So sorry, but the five minutes of speaking time, in order to give other folks a chance to.
All right. Mr. George noted. Ms. Leiter, is this the last thing that you have, or no?
I just want to know from Mr. Zelinski, he did not clarify what is one-to-one. Dr. Clark, I look forward to a glossary. And I want to know who the parents are on the pandemic response team. Then that would be it.
Okay. So let me answer. So one-to-one simply means that every student in our district has a district-issued device.
Okay.
So that already exists for students in grades 5 through 12. I mentioned earlier that we have placed the order for the Chromebooks for our K through 4 students, but they haven't arrived yet. And we'll be working with our families to fix that until those Chromebooks arrive.
That's fine. I didn't know what one-to-one.
Yeah. And then to answer your last question about the pandemic response teams, so the principals have started to form the pandemic response teams, and they will be identifying the parents that are going to be on them. Mr. Zelinski is heading out all six of the pandemic response teams in the district. Yeah, okay. So that's the answer to that. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that I missed.
No, you did. I'm looking forward to a glossary. Appreciate your time, all of you. Good luck, and all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leiter. Okay. At this time, we'll recognize Sonia Marcatello. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Hi, Sonia Marcatello, 232 Sunset Drive. Thank you for postponing Monday's meeting. I do appreciate that. I'm sure that was not fun to do. I also wanted to just share some information. I was, I watched a virtual town hall that Children's Hospital of Philadelphia put on regarding preparing for back-to-school. It was presented by three physicians. One is an infectious disease doctor, another one is a policy lab and population health physician, and then Dr. Biggs, who's the Assistant Chief Medical Officer, and she also oversees the primary care locations for CHOP. What they have, and I'm just going to share the information verbally. I did ask if I could share their actual presentation. It was recorded, but I didn't get a response, so you just got my notes. So basically, they confirmed that COVID basically hit our tri-state area at the end of December. And I think it's important for us to keep in mind that our children were likely exposed to the disease. If, if they were going to be exposed to it in school, it likely had already happened at some point before schools were shut down. So I just kind of wanted to keep everybody mindful of that as well. The tricky part that is around the bend is that the flu season is going to come knocking at our doors. And the majority of the symptoms that the flu will exhibit, COVID will do the same thing. So coughing, shortness of breath, loss of taste and smell, and there may or may not be a fever with it. So I, I feel like someone mentioned earlier about checking temperatures, and if they go into school on Monday, and, you know, and then they have a fever. But that's not always going to be a tell-all on whether or not a child or an adult is infected. So we just need to keep that in mind, both for our students and the staff as well. The other issue is that we don't know who has the virus. So the, the only important thing to remember is that mask-wearing, it is really all that the professionals are offering at this time. You know, everyone wishes that we had more answers about the disease, but we just don't. And right now, we know that masks and basic hand hygiene is what's going to keep our numbers down. They're also looking at case transmission in small communities, and that's going to be the driving force, the driving factor, actually, to ensure that the schools are safe to stay open. So when you talk about contact tracing, it's only as good as the information that's being reported. So for parents who inevitably, in the past, had, you know, given a dose of Tylenol and sent their kid to school, you know, that was an issue up until COVID. But now it's even more important that parents really stay on top of their child's symptoms, because this is not the time to be covering up anything. And that's going to be difficult for a lot of families. There's already childcare issues, and there's, you know, already people that are losing homes and had trouble because of unemployment. And so it's just something else that I thought was worth mentioning, and that we all kind of need to keep an eye on. The other concern is Labor Day weekend. So, you know, especially for us, we are down at the shore. We're at a summer resort. We're fearful that numbers are going to go up one more time before they level back off again. So I'm not sure if anyone paid attention to the trend of the numbers, but, you know, after Memorial Day, after July, you look at two to three weeks, sometimes four weeks out, the numbers, you know, the cases may have tried to trickle up a little bit. And so that's what we need to worry about. So I think the decision of postponing in-house schooling was a good decision to make. It just gives the virus a little bit of time to show what's going on. People may be trying to fit in last-minute vacations, and it's going to be another opportunity for the virus to spread. They also talked about decision tools that are listed on cdc.gov. So if parents are still uneasy about, you know, children going back to school, and, you know, I know we're all torn both ways. There's seven questions that they present, and they're very specific. You know, the decision, or sometimes it's not a decision. You know, sometimes you're just scared, and there's nothing you can do about feeling that way. And this goes for the kids, it goes for the parents, and it goes for the staff. You know, the staff have a right to be fearful of what they're about to embark. This has never happened before. But I can't stress enough that it's super important for the staff to have the ability to feel comfortable expressing concerns to building administrators, to district administrators, and to the Board of Education. Because if your staff does not feel comfortable, and you don't have an open-door policy where there's not going to be repercussions for your staff to open up about concerns, this is going to be a tragic disaster. You don't want things happening that could have been prevented. So I encourage the staff to, you know, reach out to their building administrators, express your fears, but please do your best not to show the kids that, that fear and anxiety. Please exude confidence the best you can, because they have been through the wringer. These kids have, have really had enough.
Ms. Marcatello, I'm so sorry. It's past the five minutes. I just wanted to inform Mr. Riggs.
Okay.
All right. Where are you, Ms. Marcatello? Do you want me to rotate you back, or do you have, like, a minute left?
You know what? Rotate me back, because there were a couple of things in the presentation that I wanted to share, too.
Got it. All right. Thank you very much. Talk to you soon. Okay. At this time, we'll recognize Carolyn Benagoff. Sorry about the pronunciation on that. Please unmute your microphone. You'll do a much better job of stating your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Now, hello, can you hear me? I clicked on mute. Did it work? I don't think so.
We can hear you.
You're good.
Carolyn Benninghoff, I'm calling as a concerned parent. Thank you guys for everything that you're doing. But my biggest concern is both of my children are going to be doing virtual. I work full-time and I am a nurse. So I'm tested every week, but we live with my mom who has severe comorbidities. My biggest concern with that is I work day shift because I wanted to make sure when I got hired that I was able to be home in the evening with my kids to help them with their homework. My daughter is going into fifth grade. She's newly fifth grade. And I know that it's supposed to be like synchronized learning. But is there any way that that could be like mobilized to where, you know, it could be altered to where the parent could help them in the afternoon to make sure things are able to be explained in the afternoon instead of just when they're with the teacher? That's my biggest concern is that I won't have enough time in the day to be able to help her with what she needs. She is special needs math and she does need that extra one-to-one attention while she does her work. So that's my biggest concern. Or would that be something that I would have to discuss with the teacher?
So Mrs. Benninghoff, I appreciate the concern that you just shared. And I have to believe that you are definitely not alone with that. You know, when Mr. Zalinski was talking, he mentioned that live instruction or having students log in definitely has to be age-appropriate. And we certainly know that for our younger students in kindergarten, first and second grade, that's going to be challenging. But it's also going to be challenging for parents to be available, which is why we are going to work with our families to make sure that the instruction is recorded. So that's, and we're going to talk about synchronous and asynchronous, right? Asynchronous is what you've just described, that you're not going to be available to help your child log on during that live time. And I'm sure you're going to do your best. But the instruction will be available to you so that you can watch it at a later time and then help your child grasp the concepts that were taught. So those lessons will be available to you, which is a departure from what we did in the spring.
And Dr. Clark, if I may, the idea is that when we do the synchronous instruction, that especially with the students who are remote and who are at home, there will be materials contained within Google Classroom that you can go refer to when you get home. So you can go, hey, what'd you learn today? And if you have a confused student, you can do your best to help them. And if you can't help them, then you start emailing the teacher and we'll know that your student needs extra attention.
Okay, thank you. So they will all be for like even the older grades? They'll still be able to go back and re-watch the lessons?
For the most part. Nothing can change in-person instruction. Nothing is better than that. But for the most part, there will be materials contained within Canvas and Google Classroom where those reference materials will always be there. But the difference of the five to 12, and what most parents really asked us for was they really wanted a set schedule. So let's say you were even at work. You could call your son or daughter and be like, hey, are you logged in? Be like, yeah, I'm working. I'm doing my 75-minute ELA block. I'm doing my mathematics block. That was the biggest outcry that we had and we agreed with the parents. And that's what most of our teachers wanted as well.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that even though she was going into the fifth grade, that I would still have that opportunity to help her when I got home? Because I just don't want her to fall even further behind. I mean, last spring, she did fall behind, but we've managed to bridge that gap. It's not a big deal. It's just I want to make sure that I don't hinder her for when we actually do wind up going back to school, you know, when everything kind of blows over and we have the herd immunity. Like, that's all. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Benninghoff.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Kelly Milano. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Hello, Kelly Milano, 462 Commodore Drive, Forkett River. I'm the current Acting President of the LACI Special Education Parent Advisory Group. I just wanted to start off by thanking you, Dr. Clark. I know that you've been working tirelessly and you've been making a lot of hard decisions. I'd also like to thank the board. A lot of times, we forget that they are volunteers, volunteering hours of their time for our children. I remember a few meetings ago, Mr. Riggs commenting on how much time he was actually spending on all of this, which was a lot. So again, thank you to all of the board members. I do have a comment and then two questions. Our students with special needs have gone without in-person services, such as physical occupational speech therapies, since March. They are losing skills and deteriorating physically and emotionally. I'm hoping that you put a lot more thought into planning for these students, especially if we end up having to remain on the remote model. I really urge you to do a better job for our special needs students. They are regressing on skills that some have taken years to master. So please put more thought into this. And perhaps parent and teacher input is really recommended for this one. My first question is, why and how was the decision made to have students in the self-contained classrooms for multiple disabilities, behavioral disabilities, and autism to attend school five days a week? And the LLD classes are to choose the cohort model or full-time remote without the option of five days?
So I'm sure I speak for all of our board members, all of our administrators, especially Mr. Bond, our Director of Special Services, who I know your group has had tremendous interaction with. If we could bring all of our special needs in every single day, five days a week, we absolutely would. However, and I've mentioned this in the past, our special ed numbers are high and there's just no way to accommodate everybody. Otherwise, we would just accommodate all of our students. And there's just no way to do that and maintain the social distancing that is required. The reason why we pick those populations is because those are our students that right now require the most services. And so on the days, well, let me, I was going to talk about the other group, but let me talk about the special needs students. Earlier in the presentation, I mentioned that, you know, the beginning of the school year was going to be that transition for the case managers to work with families, work with, you know, medical needs and things like that. So the best answer I can give you is that they just require the most services. That's not to say, and your point is taken, that could we do a better job in putting more thought into our... Absolutely, we can always improve. In fact, and this is tentative, next Wednesday, we are going to be bringing all of our subcommittees together. But this time, we're going to include parents. And we definitely want to make sure that there is a representation of special ed parents on our subcommittee for that meeting, which is going to be virtual. We were supposed to have that meeting last week or the week before. But as I said, the information is just changing. And, you know, we were trying to keep up with the governor's announcements. And so we didn't have that meeting, but tentatively scheduled for next Wednesday. And then to get to the second part of your question, which I believe I've already answered, is why didn't, why aren't we able to bring in all of our LLD students? And that's simply because of spacing and numbers and because of the guidelines. That's not to say, though, that those students on the days that they are in school, they are going to be receiving their related services, their PT, their OT, their speech services, among many other things. So point taken. And, you know, I will certainly share that with Mr. Bond. And I hope that that's something that if, Ms. Milano, because you're the President of CPAG, our Special Education Parent Advisory Group, that if you are the person representing next Wednesday, that you bring that up so that we can discuss it further.
Well, I hope that I will be representing. Hopefully, someone will reach out. I also did want to point out that Mr. Zalinski did not once mention anything about special needs students or special needs classes. And they do make up 26%, I believe, of our student population.
Well, and I don't know if Mr. Zalinski wants to add something, but what I'm going to say about that is when we say our students, we're talking about all of our students, general ed and special ed.
I totally understand that. But our students learn differently. So I'm just assuming that it's going to be an individual basis.
Absolutely. And, you know, just to add to that, you know, all of the accommodations that, you know, we were putting in place prior to the pandemic is certainly going to continue. I mean, we're required to do that for the IEPs. And our special ed teachers are going to work very closely with our students and our families to make sure that that happens.
Right. I have to say that the special ed teachers have done a phenomenal job with what they had and what they knew to do. I do have a second question. This pertains to the $10,000 that was donated by the Special Olympics. Have there been any decisions on how you're going to spend that? And if not, are you open to suggestions?
So I believe the monies that you're talking about were monies that were already provided to the ESY program, and that was for staffing. But any additional monies that we get and the representatives from those organizations are very interested in providing us more funds. And so absolutely, I would love, again, if, and I will reach out to you next Wednesday. I'm sorry, I will reach out to you about next Wednesday. And if you have suggestions, we would absolutely love to hear them.
Okay, thank you. I know I represent a lot of parents and I have been intercepting a lot. So you're welcome for that because I've been like taking the brunt. And I'm just trying to like portray the easiest way possible the questions that a lot of parents had.
Well, I appreciate you doing that. And I appreciate you, I believe you just volunteered to participate next Wednesday. So we will let you know when that is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, have a great night.
You too.
Thank you for your questions and concerns, President Milano. Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Dean Booth. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
How's everybody doing today? Name is Dean Booth, Pershing Avenue, Forkett River. Just want to thank everybody for the work that they've been putting in. It's kind of fitting that I'm speaking after the person I was talking after because it's related to special needs as well. You know, I think we really just need to recognize that that's a completely separate issue outside of what we're facing. And, you know, complex issues definitely call for complex solutions. And I think everybody's done a pretty good job on it. But I think that there definitely could be some more done to kind of segue off of a comment made earlier by Mr. Stemmle. The scheduling kind of boggles my mind as well as in, you know, as far as working parents are concerned, trying to say that, okay, I'm going to be in the office Monday, but not Tuesday, I'll be in Wednesday than every other Friday. That's just kind of adds another level of complexity. And up until this point, you know, March on, it's kind of been punted to employers and workers to kind of figure it out. And it's just definitely been a struggle. So to that point is what kind of contingency plans are in place if things do happen that we are forced to, you know, shut down or go all virtual? What kind of contingency plans are in place for the special needs students that up until this point have really regressed due to their lack of services that they've gotten?
So when, and thank you, Mr. Booth, for your comment. When you say contingency plans, do you mean if the governor shuts us down and we go all remote, what plans are going to be in place for our special needs students? Is that the question?
Yeah, yeah, because ultimately, since March, I mean, as great a job the teachers have done, and they've done an absolutely fantastic job, virtual learning just doesn't work for some students. You know, it's been nothing short of a dumpster fire for some of us. And it just has been a hurdle. And we'd like to see some more assistance, you know, personally speaking. You know, you guys have done a good job so far as a board, but ultimately, at the end of the day, the burden of the accommodation gets punted to us that are working and our employers. And, you know, as lenient as employers have been as well, that's a finite point that at some point, employers are going to require you to travel again. And in some points, that has happened again. You know, the world's not going to stop because of this. You know, a lot of people have, but a lot of people also have not. So I'm just wondering about those contingency plans.
Yeah, so, I mean, again, if the governor happens to shut us down and force us to go all remote, we have no choice but to comply. However, as Mr. Zalinski described, we have been working around the clock to improve the way we deliver instructions. But coupled with that is improving how we deliver related services, you know, such as the OT and the PT. I don't envy the position that any of our parents are in because I know that this is a tremendous hardship for everyone. In fact, when, you know, Tom's River made the decision to go all remote, we quickly had to take a look at how many of our staff members are teachers in Tom's River and what kind of a hardship was that going to place on childcare. So it's weighing heavy on all of our minds. And I'd love to tell you that I have all of the solutions and the contingency plans, but at this point, I don't. All we can do is continue to improve upon what we've already implemented and, you know, forge ahead and hope that we get to a point where, like Mrs. Marcatello said, we develop a permanent solution such as testing or a vaccine even. I believe that's one of the things that she talked about. And I'm sure she's going to tell us a little bit more when she comes back to the microphone. But until then, we have to just continue doing the best that we possibly can. And then you have that commitment from us.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Patrick Grant. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment. We'll try one more time for Patrick Grant. Okay, I can see he's unmuted his microphone.
Sorry about that. I apologize, kids yelling in the background. So my name is Patrick Grant from Vaughan Avenue section of Forkett River. Got a couple of questions. During the previous school year, remote learning for most of the students in the elementary schools was more like remote busywork. Most, if not all, the instruction was done via, you know, videos on YouTube or, you know, the various learning platforms that the school had signed the students up for. Is there any plans for 2020, for 2020, 2021 school year to have something more than that? Most of these kids, as you've said yourselves, strive for the teacher interaction. There's a huge problem with a lot of these kids where they're viewing their parents as a teacher and are getting, you know, they're having issues not wanting to do the schoolwork. And when there is problems, the, yes, the teachers are available via, you know, phone calls and stuff like that. But it's not the same as having a child receive instruction directly from their teacher, right? We're in an age where we're able to do things like these Zoom meetings for the Board of Education meetings. You know, Fortune 50 companies have moved completely remote and are doing, you know, executive board meetings and all kinds of instruction remotely. I work in IT for a living. You know, we do training all the time remotely. There's no reason why the school can't figure out a way to provide real, live teacher instruction like homeschool programs that people pay for do for these students. Is there any plans to actually provide some real instruction via remote learning for the children? Or is it strictly going to be videos again like we had last year?
Mr. Zalinski, would you like to expand on that a bit?
He's not there anymore.
Did we lose Mr.?
Yeah.
Oh, Mr. Zalinski's not on. Okay.
No, I muted the mic so that the headphone, so the speaker didn't come back on you guys, that's all.
Oh, no worries. No, I was going to ask District Supervisor Zalinski to answer, but it doesn't appear that he's on anymore. So like I said earlier, and like Mr. Zalinski mentioned during his presentation, we're always looking for ways to improve. There is... uh, we're always looking for ways to improve. There is going to be um, much more live instruction than you saw in the spring. Um, believe it or not, one of the things that we talked about during one of our many roundtable discussions is, you know, how do we install a webcam in every single classroom so that we're just showing the instruction? I can't, the word just escaped me. And you know, there were a lot of cost factors involved there, quality of webcam, privacy issues. Um, but that doesn't even off the table. And so, you know, as this progresses, we're going to continue to explore ways to improve uh, remote instruction because you made good points. I get it and I don't disagree with you.
Genuk, um, I have a couple of questions, by the way. Um, the next question is the children that have chosen either full remote or AB cohort. Um, I'm assuming and if I'm wrong, you know, that's fine. The kids who have chosen the AB model are going to all be in the same class, right? So you would have, you know, if at some point, let's say, you know, end of the first marking period, we go back to full time in school. Um, you know, whatever teacher it was, the kids that were there A day would be with the same kids on B day and it was the same teacher teaching just two different days of, you know, of the week type of thing. Um, if that is the case, um, and you have, you know, as your own slide showed, you have approximately thirty percent of the the popular, the student population in the school choosing to do, you know, full time remote, you obviously don't need as many teachers physically in the classrooms to be teaching this, the kids on the AB model. Would that not then free up those teachers theoretically to provide more in-depth, as you said, you're, you know, that's the plan, but more in-depth, you know, teacher at home with a webcam, you know, teaching, you know, a, a second grade or third grade class, um, you know, type of thing. You know, and the reason behind that is, sorry, I apologize.
I'm sorry, let me, no, that's okay. So I think what you're asking is, um, is there like a full class that perhaps is all remote and could one teacher be assigned to just work with all of those remote students? Um, if that's the question you're asking, then the answer is yes. So the principals are working on the data that came in from that, uh, return to school commitment form to see, and I'm just, again, going to use first grade as an example, that perhaps at, you know, Lenoka Harbor, there is a group of 25 students whose parents have opted for all remote. Then yes, we would group those students together and have that teacher work with those students because now we don't have to worry about the 10 sitting in front of the teacher and the 10 that are home. Um, so we are going to do that to the best of our ability, but we're still breaking down the data, still getting in touch with the parents who didn't return the school, uh, the return to school commitment form. I think that's what you asked me.
No, it wasn't. It, that leads into a subsequent question, right? So if that is the case, and let's say in one of the schools, there's, you know, one classroom for each grade that is essentially being unoccupied because of the number of students that are coming into school versus remote. Why couldn't there be, you mentioned about, you know, you looked into webcam, stuff like that. There doesn't have to be that in every classroom, right? You would only need it for the classrooms that would be facilitating the virtual learning, right? There's no privacy concerns because it would just be a teacher in a classroom presenting her lesson like she would as if those kids were physically in the room with her, just they'd be watching it via webcam, you know, on Google Classroom. Is that something that could be looked into? If that does end up happening?
I suspect that we are going to see that happen.
Okay.
For sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um.
It's a possibility.
So the other question, and this goes to, um, the, uh, some of the special ed related stuff that had gotten mentioned earlier. There are numerous students that throughout the school year get identified as needing, you know, various things that would constitute an IEP, speech, occupational therapy, et cetera. There's a rather lengthy process that the school has in place to um, ascertain and assess the needs of the student, whether or not they're going to qualify based on, you know, state mandated and federal guidelines. All of those assessments were essentially halted at the end of, you know, after COVID hit last year, right? Or this year, I should say. Um, and last school year, any assessments that had gotten started were never finished, right? The, the children that were theoretically in need of help, you know, if the assessments were done and they were done under the assumption that the kids that needed the help, you know, were qualifying for it. Is there any plans to allow that to start happening again, specifically for students that have chosen for various reasons? You know, that the parents have chosen to do the all virtual model so that they can get the help that they need, you know, even if it's, you know, the day that they have occupational therapy, let's say, obviously that's something that needs to happen in person. They would come into the school for an hour and a half for their occupational therapy. Um, and then in addition to that, um, some of the students, um, you know, my son specifically that I know of, um, he was receiving speech, you know, multiple days a week in school and now that, you know, we went virtual last year, that speech dropped down to one day a week, right? Is there any plans to ensure that the students that were receiving help in school are receiving the same quantity of help that they were getting beforehand and not a diminished level because of what's going on?
So, I mean, off the top of my head, you know, I, I, I'd have to talk to Mr. Bond, who's our Director of Special Services to see, you know, where we left off with that. But if you're asking, is testing going to continue in the new school year? Absolutely, it has to. We have to be in compliance that way. So I don't know what level of testing was not completed. Um, but I can certainly tell you that moving forward, you know, that's going to have Mr. Bond's full attention along with the entire child study team. But it sounds like your question is a little, it sounds like your question is a little bit more specific and so what I'm going to ask you to do is to reach out to Mr. Bond directly because he's going to be able to answer your question thoroughly.
That's not a problem. I can give your office a call.
Perfect.
Mr. Riggs, that's your five minutes, sir.
Okay. Not a problem. I'm done. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Jean Capalupo. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Hello, my name is Jean Capalupo and I live on Deerhead Lake Drive. I just have, um, a few quick questions. As, um, for the September fourteenth return for the special needs children, how is that being determined on which ones are returning?
So, um, like I mentioned earlier, that is going to be for the students in the very specific specialized program. So our autistic programs, our uh, behavioral programs and our multiple, multiply disabled programs. Uh, the case managers are going to be reaching out to the families um, to make appointments to come in. And I believe Mr. Bond is working on his plan. Um, and the purpose of that week is to just give those students the opportunity to be in the building without everybody else, to get accustomed to routines, uh, to have an understanding about the masks. To really know what the role is of directional signs and, you know, the, the tape that's going to be on the floor, that's, and the signs that they walk this way. So it's just really an opportunity for the students to be in the building, uh, on their own with their case managers and their teacher. Um, but the kid, but like I said, that information will be forthcoming because I know Mr. Bond's working on that.
Okay, um, my next question is, um, middle school. We have, you know, the seventh graders who are now went from their way at Mill Pond, they're now being thrown into middle school. I know that the blocking, I read all of that. How is a typical day for them going to look? Are they still switching classes and are they going to be with different kids in every class and stuff like that?
So they are changing classes, but again, um, you know, the, the building is going to be marked up so that the students know which direction to walk in so that we can ensure that, you know, we're socially distancing. They're always going to have their masks on. Um, but we've minimized how many times they're going to travel uh, by reducing the block to four. So they're going to have four instructional blocks per day.
So it's not going to be the same kids in each
No, no.
Going to be mixed with different kids throughout their four classes.
They are. No, yes, except that I do know that the principals, both Mr. King and Mr. Brandis are looking to see, you know, to what extent possible can they group or cohort? Um, but that becomes much more challenging at the middle school and high school because there are so many different classes.
Right.
Um, which is why we're going to take some extra precautions for um, when the kids are walking in the hallways and when they're going from class to class and the students will have the opportunity to wipe their desks down before they sit down and we'll have all of those, um, materials available to them. Um, in addition to all of the cleaning and safety protocols that we are going to put in place for them as well.
And is there going to be any kind of orientation for the kids that have never stepped foot in the middle school? They have no idea where they're going, what they're doing?
Yep. Mr. King is working on, uh, seventh grade orientation right now, so you should be receiving that very soon.
Okay, perfect. And my only other thing is lunch. Lunch is non-existent anymore for them, right? Or will there still be lunch?
Well, the caf, the cafeteria is non-existent. They're going to be doing what's called grab and go. Um, so they're going to grab their lunch and take it with them because remember we're on a short day and they'll be able to eat that lunch when they get home.
So when they get home, because masks have to be on the bus. Worn on the bus.
Yes.
So my concern, my only concern is the fact of you have some kids that aren't going to wait, so those masks are going to come off and they're going to eat because there's really nobody on there to tell them not to do that.
Well, actually, that's not true. We are working on, uh, staff to be on our buses to the extent possible. Um, and I hear what you're saying. Uh, believe me, we just had a discussion this afternoon about masks, you know? Um, and, you know, what do kids do when they have to take a sip of water? Well, they have to move the mask over to take that sip of water. Um, so I, I'm sure that we're going to be able to answer these questions, uh, when school starts and as they, uh, as the incidences or the issues or the problems start to present themselves.
All right, well, that is about it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Jennifer Dunkowski. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Hi, Jennifer Dunkowski, I'm Richard Place in Forkett River. I'm just piggybacking after Dr. Clark's message about the virtual learning with the elementary schools. As somebody else had stated also, in March, it, it was not live and I'm very hard to understand why it can't be live streaming. I get the webcam issue, I get the privacy issue. But why can it be live videos for a fifth and up, but not for the elementary school?
So let me make the distinction. Um, I, I'm not, are you talking about live instruction like the student logs in and is watching the teacher teach in the classroom? Or are you talking about a, an instructional video of the child's teacher that they can watch whenever it's convenient for the parent and the child?
Right, so you're, when I spoke to a Board of Ed member about a few weeks ago, he told me everything was going to be pre-recorded. Whether it was the hybrid model or whatnot. So the first two weeks of school, is anything for these elementary kids going to be live or is it just going to be, okay, here, watch another YouTube video, here, watch this video. There was nothing taught to these elementary kids. Nothing.
Right.
Everything was, here's a link. One hour a week of
Right, and
happy birthdays and being disconnected. And I don't
I, I mentioned that earlier and I know that Mr. Zolinski mentioned that. Um, it, it is going to be a departure from what we did in the spring. So in some cases, it is going to be live instruction where possible. Um, remember, it's not always developmentally appropriate for, for us to say to a kindergartner, you know, your class is going to start at 8:00 AM, please make sure you log on. The question becomes, well, how does a student log on? Sometimes they might not be able to do it by themselves. Um, they're going to need the parent. What if the parent's not available? And so that's where we're going to rely on instructional videos created by the teacher. Um, and we've been working on that, uh, a lot. You know, there's been professional development. Our elementary supervisors have worked on some instructional videos for our teachers on how to do that. Um, and it's a work in progress. We're going to continue to improve upon this craft because we simply don't know how long it's going to last.
Understandable. Um, another quick question, like enrichment programs. Nothing was done for the children that were advancing and everything. My son fell behind because he was enrichment, but nothing was done. We just kept him at the basic skill level. The teacher did nothing to advance him. Teacher did nothing to help me try to advance him. Nothing, you know?
Right, so are, are you talking about basic skills instruction or are you talking about co-curricular clubs and activities?
Talented. All of that was put on hold and the board member that I spoke with was not sure if that was even going to be um, brought into this year. So the ones in enrichment, do they fall back behind?
No, so I know in my presentation, I mentioned that, uh, we were going to hold off on, uh, clubs and activities and that we were going to try and bring them back on a tiered, uh, system. But one of the things that we've talked about in our many meetings is that, you know, co-curricular, enrichment, all of those programs are so important for our students for socializing and learning new skills and just learning topics that are of interest to them. So we're going to try and start them as soon as possible, uh, even while we are on the remote. And that's one of the FAQ questions that came up is, you know, when will co-curricular clubs and activities start? Um, and our advisors are going to begin working on planning for that as soon as possible.
Okay, one last simple irrelevant question about the virtual learning. The summer program for the kids, does that still go on? Because I submitted everything. I just want to make sure that that's still going to be recognized for them.
So I'm sorry, which, which program do you mean?
That summer reading that they did?
Oh, summer reading. Yes, it is. Yeah.
That's all I want to make sure.
Continue that.
It's his butt reading and I want to make sure that was still going to be recognized.
Absolutely, and encourage your son to keep reading.
All right, thanks, Dr. Clark.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Collette Dodd. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment. Okay, Mr. Riggs, seeing no response from Ms. Dodd.
Give her, Collette, you still didn't, Ms. Dodd, just give it one more chance, if you could try to unmute, please. Okay, all right. It doesn't seem to be working. Thank you very much, though.
All right, at this point, we'll, uh, recognize Dee Behujian. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Hi, Dee Behujian, Forkett River. I'm also on the Board of the Special Education Advisory Club. My question is, when or if we go back, the children who receive special services, will they be pulled out of the only 10 to 15 hours of academics for special services? Or will there be an after-school option or maybe a third cohort day?
Well, Mrs. Behujian, I can't tell you I have the answer to that question, but I will find out and I will get back to you.
Thank you. Uh, you're going to have after-school extracurricular and sports activities you just stated?
We will have co-curricular activities, yeah. So co-curricular are, you know, the music, the art, um, academics, like we had, I'm just trying to think of some of the clubs, the Rough Riders uh, at Mill Pond. Um, and yes, along with the sports. And we will try to And we will try to start the co-curriculars as soon as possible.
Well, I hope that you can accommodate the special services in the same capacity that you are going to accommodate everything else. Thank you.
We will do our best.
Okay, Mr. Riggs, at this point, I don't see any new hands up. However, Amory Lighter, um, has her hand up again.
Go away, hold on.
Actually, there we go. Uh, Mr. Rizzoli.
Oh, never mind, we're back up to four.
All right, so, Mr. Rizzoli, um, please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Hi, how you doing? Uh, I gave you some forewarning on a previous part of the meeting to, uh, Mr. Peters and Mr. DeGeorge. My question is, are our facilities equipped with H-E-P-A filters in their HVAC systems?
Mr. Peters, did you want to weigh in before I do?
No, go ahead, you go first.
Sure, uh, the short answer is yes, Mr. Rizzoli. We recently upgraded all of our, um, our filters to Hepa Murph brand filters, uh, so the answer is yes.
Okay, that's great, because, uh, they do, um, call out the coronavirus because of, uh, of their ability to, uh, get right down to the, uh, the micron specifications that are needed. Uh, on our agenda today, A number 22, uh, fans and parents, um, when it comes to sports and extracurriculars, um, we're going to have sports, I understand that, but we're really concerned about the teachers, we're really concerned about the students, but we don't show any concern that I can see in any of the documentation about parents and fans. Um, maybe we should look at, uh, something that says, okay, we're going to have the sports, we're going to have football, we're going to have soccer, we're going to have, you know, lacrosse, or whatever these outdoor, uh, sports are in some of these extracurriculars, but maybe we shouldn't let fans and parents in. Maybe we shouldn't have concessions, something for the board to consider. I mean, why risk exposure to the taxpayers in public if we're not willing to risk exposure to our kids and our teachers? Just a question, it's up to you guys to make the decision. The other thing I, I have a question about is, I wrote, uh, on the website, it said, if you're going to be part of the meeting tonight, please put your questions in. And it's, I did, twice, okay? I haven't heard responses on my questions. The questions are very simple, okay? If you're a member of the NJEA and you are not working, okay, uh, the teachers are working their backsides off. I give it to them, I give them a great amount of credit, I love them, uh, I think they're great and they're really sacrificing and doing everything they can, including the teachers that have little kids of their own. But, well, cafeteria teachers, all the cafeteria workers are not working, all the bus drivers are, all of the bus drivers are not working, all of the janitors know, don't need to be working, all of the security people don't need to be working. My question is that the NJEA members who are not working, are they still being paid full salary? You know, the other thing about all of this comes down to, w- when you send somebody to school, to the public schools, part of what your tax dollars spent really goes down to childcare services. And it seems like all the previous people who came on and spoke, a lot of them, especially people who hold regular jobs, are concerned about what happens to my kids in childcare. Uh, I know that, uh, one of the school districts, I believe it was Stafford, offered a program where if the kids were not being taught, that at least the schools would be open for childcare during regular school hours, which would really make a big difference to people in our school district who have to hold regular jobs and have issues, real issues, with childcare under normal circumstances, like I said, part of my tax dollars, a- and, and I've never appealed or, or reduced my tax dollars, because it's, to me, it was just part of what you pay for childcare, okay? Along with education, childcare, it's just part of public schools, part of even private school, you know, that's part of tuition. Um, so i- it's something to consider, maybe expand on some kind of childcare services in the schools, uh, during the regular school hours, if we can't be open during the regular school hours. Uh, these are just kinds of things that came up and, and I just, you know, they, they hit my mind. And the other thing was, you know, that the last meeting, Mr. Polino, uh, asked a question if it was possible to bring the athletic director in for this meeting. Where is the athletic director? Uh, are there people that can answer the questions without the athletic director? Uh, I had some, some of the questions I'm asking now are about athletics and, and fans and, and people being present at, at, uh, events, scholastic events, transportation of the athletes. Uh, the athletic director didn't show up, and Mr. Polino, who's a board member, made a request, is there a reason why the athletic director did not show up? Mr. Ryan wouldn't let the NJAA member show up, I don't know why. All I'm asking are simple questions, I expect answers, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzoli, and we will get to the answers, but to answer your, your question specifically about the athletic director, uh, we didn't, I, I did not ask her to come this evening. Um, there was a, you know, mix-up for Monday night, um, but whatever questions we can't answer, uh, we will certainly get answers and we'll continue to add them to the FAQ document.
Dr. Clark, could you, um, explain to Mr. Rizzoli about the childcare so everybody would hear at once?
The childcare for our staff?
Yes.
Sure, sure. So, um, yeah, we are, we have made that service available for, uh, our staff members. Champions is the, uh, organization that, uh, provides before and after care to our families, and we worked with them to come up with a program, um, to provide childcare Monday through Friday, seven hours a day, um, at a greatly reduced rate, greatly reduced rate. Um, but not only is that available to them for childcare, the staff members hired for, um, hired by Champions will also provide, um, assistance for those students, who by the way, don't have to be, uh, students in Lacey, um, they will provide assistance, instructional assistance for those students to log into whatever remote learning they're doing in their own district. Um, so thank you, uh, Mrs. McAvoy, for reminding me to, uh, outline that, and I hope that our staff members take advantage of that program. It's a program that we're doing just for, um, this pandemic, and, um, we're going to wait and see what kind of our response we get.
Okay, uh, before we move on here, I'm going to do, uh, just a quick five-minute break here, five-minute bathroom break, everyone, uh, just take a break for a couple minutes because we still have five more people that want to talk. Um, so as soon as we get back from that, we'll get back to business here, all right?
Thank you, Mr. Riggs.
Okay, uh, looks like I wasn't paying attention to time. Is that five minutes? Are we good?
We are good.
All right, all right. Uh, back on, game on.
Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Sharon Sylvia. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment. One more call for Sharon Sylvia. Please unmute your microphone to begin your public comment.
Okay, sorry, Ms. Sylvia, if you, um, you want to try again in a minute.
Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Denise G. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Yes, we can. Oh, I'm sorry, okay, great, thank you. I just have a quick question, and I might have missed this. My name's Denise Jelenella, Erie Way. Um, I might have missed this, if it, if, if I did, I apologize. Last year, my daughter went into her first year of, uh, high school, she was on the swim team. Is there a swim season this year?
As of right now, there is a swim season.
There is.
Again, keep in mind that, uh, information just, uh, was released this morning by the NJSIAA, um, so that is subject to change, but as of right now, yeah.
Okay, and do we know, and maybe we don't, because it's just too soon, but, um, is there any word, like, as far as when they have their meets, will there be spectators allowed there?
I could not give you the answer to that just yet.
Okay, but as of right now, there are, there is a swim season. I appreciate your time, thank you for your answer.
And I'm just going to, uh, say this, uh, definitely, uh, reach out to Mrs. Dalbento, the athletic director, uh, she might be able to get you an immediate answer.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Have a great night.
You too.
Okay, for, uh, the next two that are coming up, I'm, I'm going to be a little more stringent on our five minutes. All right, Ms. Lighter and Ms. Markatello, when it's your turn, uh, five minutes, please.
Okay, at this time, we will, uh, recognize Ms. Lighter, go right ahead, and, uh, oh, I'm sorry, I, uh, bumped her down to the bottom, just take me a second to get her back, hold on. In the interest of time, I'm going to ask Ms. Lighter if she could raise her hand again, and right now, we'll recognize Ms. Markatello. Oh, there we go, we've got Ms. Lighter back. All right, go ahead, Ms. Lighter.
I'm back. All right, guys, Amory Lighter, the woods. Um, so there's no, there's masks all the time, are there going to be what is being referred to as mask breaks?
That's a great question. Um, we just had a conversation about this very topic with, uh, our board attorney. Um, right now, we know that the requirement is that students wear masks at all times, um, unless there's a reason to not wear the mask. And so when would that be? Uh, when a student is eating, when the student is taking a sip of water, or perhaps when student is participating in physical education and they're overexerting themselves or just exercising. So the rule of thumb for us is going to be students will wear masks at all times unless there's a reason not to wear the mask.
Okay, thank you. And then regarding Dr. Clark, the revised, uh, RRP Restart Recovery Plan, because you said that your secretary's working on it, and so I don't have to, uh, reread the whole thing and find the things that changed, will that document, um, will that revised or updated document be made available with the highlights for the changes? Yay, please?
Yeah, we'll make notes where, uh, the revisions took place.
I'd appreciate.
Uh, maybe what we'll do is, you know, a table of contents to say, you know, page 45 was revised, um, so yeah, we'll, we'll work something out.
All right, and then one other thing, um, my one daughter is a senior. When she entered seventh grade, I started seeking help from the guidance department, and Mr. Halela is a saint. Um, he sat me in his office at that time and in true football fashion unveiled his big whiteboard and started explaining things, um, about college. I didn't have the opportunity to attend college myself, I know nothing about it. So as my daughter Sophia has progressed through the district, I've been asking for, uh, age-appropriate, grade-appropriate health, help as she moved through. Um, I'm continuing to ask for help, I'm sure the guidance department, um, is overwhelmed, I don't know, I just, uh, I just hope that, you know, let's not forget, I mean, I know there's a lot going on, but like, don't forget the little guys that still need the help, that's all. You guys are doing a great job, thank you, I'm done.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to recognize Amy Simmons. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Hi, my name is Amy Simmons, I'm on Center Street in Forkett River, um, and I don't really want to speak, I have things to say, but I'm not going to. However, my daughter would like to just say her piece, um, she is a district student, so I'm just going to turn it over to her, if it's okay with you.
Definitely.
Thank you for letting me speak for a few minutes. I love.
Get a little closer to the mic, we can't hear you so good.
Okay, um, actually, you know what, maybe I'll read her statement, she recorded it because she was a little nervous to speak in front of everybody, um, but I have it on paper in front of me. So her name is Lily Simmons, she is in the sixth grade at Mill Pond, um, and I wish she could see the notes because it's really cute, she typed it out herself today. It says, "Thank you for letting me speak for a few minutes. I love school, I miss school, my friends and teachers. I will be going back on the hybrid schedule because that's what works best for my family, but I don't want to go back. My feelings about the school in the fall might not be what you would think would come from a student. Many things about school may not be normal or what we are used to, and it'll be tough. Most people have no idea what it will be like in this time and how different it'll really be for the students. There are certain things some students need, maybe they need a friend to talk to, or just some type of interaction with others. I think that we shouldn't be locked inside a classroom all day, sitting six feet apart with masks on, or at lunch, sitting by ourselves, eating facing forward in a room with no air conditioning. Maybe to help those students who need interactions, I think we could sit outside to eat lunch so we can still social distance and get to talk to people. If we end up going virtual, it'll benefit us because no student will be at risk to get or spread the coronavirus to their families. I think it would be best to keep everyone safe at home." So I just wanted to read it real quick because I, you know, as adults, we all talk about school and what we think is best, and to hear it from a 10-year-old, when I didn't really ask her opinion for a long time, I didn't ask her what she wanted, um, and I just thought it was really important for us to take into consideration what our children want to. Thank you.
Thank you, and it was great to hear from, uh, Lily. Thank you, Lily, for sharing that with us, really appreciate it.
Okay, at this time, we'll, um, recognize Sonia Markatello for the second time. Go ahead and state your name and address and, uh, begin your public comment.
Hello, okay, so just to finish up the, the information that CHOP was discussing, um, the other issue that they were empowering districts to educate pa- uh, parents and students about signs and symptoms of COVID, and it's interesting that Ms. Simmons, um, just that, that I'm following her with this, because the other issue was asking the kids what they think about school and what's it going to look like? And we may assume that we know what the kids are thinking and feeling, but that's not necessarily true. It's also important to normalize the situation and let them know that everyone is a little bit fearful, but we've managed for the past about five or six months to adjust our lifestyle, and we can do the same thing, um, to get them back in school and get them back with their, with their friends. It's important to instill confidence in the kids. Um, the issue about the mask wearing, they, uh, CHOP is adamant about full-time mask wearing and social distancing, that it should not be one or the other, that it should be both. Um, and when you have students, um, or even sometimes adults that feel that they cannot wear the mask, it's not usually an, "I can't breathe." Um, they can breathe, it's just a matter of allowing the mask, allowing that you're breathing to adjust to the mask wearing, it can also be a source of anxiety. Um, so just to kind of keep those couple of things in mind, uh, CHOP is taking the stance that there are going to be very few and far between extenuating circumstances, that they are going to excuse a child from wearing a mask in school, that's how strongly they feel about it. Um, and then I just wanted to, Dr. Clark, you mentioned something about vaccines earlier, and what I. And then I just wanted to, Dr. Clark, you mentioned something about vaccines earlier, and what I may have mentioned. But I just want to make it clear that I don't have a stance on a COVID vaccine. I do think it's gonna be super important for everyone to get a flu shot if there's no, you know, extenuating objections to it, because there are only going to be so many COVID testing opportunities. And so for the patients that are going to come down with flu-like symptoms, that is going to eat up the healthcare system's resources, testing, more PPE, and everything else. And so that's why they're really pushing for the flu vaccine, because it's so close to COVID, the signs and symptoms, and we just don't run in, want to run into an issue where we're knocking down the healthcare system again. To piggyback onto the couple of parents that spoke about special ed, it's, I mean, I imagine it's worth just thinking about it. If school needed to shut down based on the numbers of your special education students, would it be feasible, I'm just hypothetically asking, to allow your special education students, staff, the program to continue to commence? CHOP is also encouraging school districts to maintain cohorts. So in other words, keeping the same group of students the best you can, because that's gonna be the easiest way to contact trees. And your special ed kids are typically in the same classrooms with the same staff members. They can socially distance a little bit easier. I know that's not a Lacey District's decision, that's probably gonna be a statewide decision. But just a couple of points, I give you guys kudos. This has not been fun, and I appreciate you letting me speak one more time. Thank you.
And Ms. Marketello, can I ask you a question? If you're able to get that presentation, I think it would be beneficial for us to add it to our website as a resource. So if you are able to get it and share it with me, I will make sure it gets up there.
Okay, I'll try. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. It looks like we have one left. All right, at this time, we'll recognize Terry Collins. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment. Ms. Collins, if you could, try bottom-left corner to unmute, perhaps. Okay, Mr. Merman, looks like, yep, go to Michelle Ledham, please. Okay, Michelle Ledham, please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Hi, I'm Michelle Ledham, Meadow Lane, Forkett River. I know this has been a very long meeting, so I waited to see if there were more people who wanted to speak. I have a question not about the reopening plan, but instead, I have a son who's going into fourth grade, and he was in the gifted and talented program. I want to give props to Mrs. Fisher from Forkett River School, who engaged them the entire time that they were on virtual learning, and it was awesome for him to just have that extension. I went back into the board meeting minutes quite a few months back, and I didn't see where the discussion was to take out the gifted and talented teachers from the elementary schools. Could anybody explain to me, like, when that decision was made and what the rationale was?
So, um, it was, I can't remember the month that it was, but it was due to budgetary constraints. But, you know, we are required to have a gifted and talented program, and so what we've done is we revamped the program. And the students at the elementary level are going to receive it as a special. In fact, we're just putting the final touches on the curriculum for that program. And we've identified the staff members who are going to deliver it as well. So there will be more information on our website about gifted and talented very soon.
Okay, thank you very much, and I can't believe you guys actually pronounced my last name correctly. I had one other question about the virtual learning days, the first two weeks. Will the students be signing on the days of their cohorts, or will they be signing on each day? Or, of course, that's probably forthcoming as well.
So the best way that I can answer that question right now is it's probably gonna be likely that they're going to sign on as cohorts to just help them transition and be ready for when the hybrid starts on the 21st. That would make the most sense. But I know that the principals are working with the supervisors and the teachers. I've been watching emails go out, and Mrs. Amos, who's our elementary district supervisor, has been working with them as well, so.
Okay, thank you very much, guys. That was it for me.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Mr. Merman, we'll just give it, just, just give it 10 seconds, see if anyone else puts their hand up, please. You got anybody who would like to speak at this time? All you have to do is press the raise your hand button. If you're calling in via phone line, you can dial *9 to raise your hand. Okay, Mr. Riggs, seeing none. Okay, so we are gonna move on to board member comments and committee reports. But before we do that, real quick, Mr. Lightle, Mr. Merman, thank you very much for facilitating what just happened. And to everyone else who's still in the crowd, it is public comment, and that's what it's supposed to be. We're supposed to give you an opportunity to say what you want. But I thought it was important, at least in this instance and with what's going on, to expand it out to a bit of a question-and-answer session. So that's what you just saw. That's not typical. It's supposed to be public comment. A lot of times, we'll just say, you know, "Thank you for your comment," but the give-and-take and the back-and-forth questions, we thought were very important to do at this moment. That being said, we're gonna move on to our comments and our committee reports. And I'll start right with Ms. McAvoy in our curriculum chair, if you would, please.
Sure. We had a curriculum meeting last week. Myself, Mrs. President Downing, Mr. Plino, and Dr. Clark were all there. We discussed a return-to-school commitment form, which Dr. Clark already told you about, the school reopening checklist, which is online. We saw the new social science program that the middle school will be getting, and we talked about the K-12 curriculum updates that are now complete and ready for CUSAC. And we talked about the memo that Dr. Clark put out to the staff for the FFCRA, the Family Leave Program. There were questions raised about the weight room. Dr. Clark shared a schedule that from 7:00 to 7:30, the weight room is open to any fall athlete who has been through COVID screening. 7:30 to 10:00, student athletes are allowed there with a coach. 10:00 to 11:30, the weight room is open to any fall athlete who has been through COVID screening. There's been a lot of talk through the public and a lot of questions to board members about the weight room, so I brought that up. And I have just two things, I'm not gonna do spotlight on graduates this month, just because the meeting is so late, but I do want to just say that there's a woman in town, a nurse, Kim Mandato. She's spearheading a committee to make a mask for every student and every staff member in the entire district. The district is giving each staff member and student one, but Mrs. Mandato is also making one for everyone. So if anybody wants to donate sheets to her or any kinds of material, that would be a wonderful addition. And another person in town, Mr. Spellos, Jim Spellos, he owns Convexor. He wanted everyone to know that if anybody has an extra laptop or desktop or screen, he is going to, for free, convert them to a Chromebook for any student that doesn't have one. So you could contact him at Convexor. And my only comments is, I understand as a parent and as the teacher how difficult this is, and I understand the hardship it is for many of the parents, but we have to get through this. I don't like that term unprecedented times, but it is unprecedented times. And just so everyone knows that all of us are doing the best that we can to ensure that the students are safe, the staff is safe, and we're all working, as you know, tirelessly around the clock. That's all my comments, Vice President Riggs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McAvoy. And Mr. Peters, you look like you're ready to go over there, so let's hear from that facilities committee.
Okay, we had a facilities committee last week. Obviously, the big concern discussion was safety, prepping the schools, prepping the schools when the students leave. We had our facilities director come down and give us a demonstration of our decontaminating sprayer, which is a mounted backpack sprayer that actually sprays, disinfects. And I personally brought a clear face shield in and asked our facilities director to spray that, and within one minute, it was dry with no residue. Very extremely impressed. We're waiting on some more sprayers to come in. Obviously, there's a lot of districts that are ordering these, and that was one of the reasons we postponed a little bit of the opening, because right now, we need them to disinfect all the schools and all the buses. Last Friday morning, I had the privilege with Dr. Clark to spend some time with me. In her huge schedule sheet, she took out some time. We drove around to every school, just the two of us, and we looked just at the exterior of the buildings, because soon, we're gonna have a tour, all the board members of the interior of the buildings. And I'll get a better outlook, Mr. Rizzoli, on the airflow and the ductwork and see where we're at with that. But we drove around the exterior of schools, asked facility chairman, "I want these schools perfect when these kids come back and the students come back, whether it be weeds and extra painting or whatever it is, we have the time to do it while they're in the classes. I want these schools in a prestige position." What else? That's pretty much it. I really want to thank the public. I had some extra solder pads put in tonight, because I thought we were gonna get kind of beat up, but I was really impressed with all the positive comments, and that's because of, I believe, Dr. Clark, Mr. DeGeorge, the administration. We've attended numerous, numerous meetings. They're on it, they're on it, and hopefully, we get to stay in school. Thank you very much, and everybody be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Let's go, let's go batting out of order here. Mr. Scanlon with the Finance Committee.
Good evening. I just liked, a combination of recapping the Finance Committee is also sort of recapping the agenda tonight. There's things on there, the S-Rex, we managed to come up with another $44,000 in redemption for the S-Rex. And then there's a couple of things on the agenda that refer to digital divide, where we're going to work to make sure that all students have equal access to electronic technology, new Chromebooks, access in general. And along with, that's a grant, a grant is paying for that, that's what I'm getting at. It's grant money that's coming in. We have grant money coming in for securing your children's future, about $223,000 for that. That's on the agenda tonight. When you see these numbers and you see the things that are being purchased with them, it's not tax dollars, it's grant money that's been accomplished. So I think it's important that the public know that, that we are, we are researching these things and finding places where we can go to help the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Mrs. DeCenza.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Hello and good evening to everyone. I'd like to welcome all the first-time attendees to our school board meeting tonight, and thank you for all the great questions and comments. We are truly sorry that this school year will be so different for everyone. I just hope the community knows that our administration is doing the very best we can with all the directives the district receives almost constantly. Back in June, I apologized in advance for missing graduation, and then I also missed the July 20th in-person meeting as well, due to travel on family business. It was the first monthly business meeting that I had to miss in nearly eight years. Congratulations to all the high school graduates. I'm so very sorry I missed the actual graduation ceremonies, but I was glad we were able to do the house-to-house parade back on April 23rd. It's nice to see the signs are still outside many houses as I travel through town. I'd also like to thank all the staff for their cleaning and super special efforts at this time. The pandemic is taxing all of us to the max. My family has been horribly affected by the COVID. So believe me, I know the anxiety we all face. And the business office staff has gone above and beyond with all the extra work that came upon them due to the COVID-19 issues, such as refunding the parents for subscription busing. That one thing alone was a very large task, and a nice job on the S-1701 closeout report for June 30th. I know Ms. Sharon Sylvia puts in a lot of time to bring all those numbers together. Thank you very much. I need to speak for a moment about the $5,000 donation that I had promised to the district back in June to help with the insurance deductible on the ethics cases. My husband has now totally reneged on the remainder of the note, of the donation deal after the recent property tax bill arrived, showing a large increase in school taxes. So I'm sorry, the $2,000 I gave is it. Mr. Peters, your response to my voluntary donation at the June meeting didn't help. I also did not appreciate your line of questioning at church on Sunday, August 2nd. And I was not pleased with your "Happy Friday, My Peeps" memo. That did not go over well with me either last week. We need to be more professional. On July 21st, the New Jersey Department of Education School Ethics Committee moved all of our cases forward, including the last two counts against me, but I'm not worried at all. My case against Mr. Giordano, as well as Mr. Rozzi's and Ms. Marketello's, are now being prosecuted by the State of New Jersey Deputy Attorney General's Office. We were sent official decisions that we have been relieved as complainants. And the State of New Jersey takes over a case like this, it's a very serious matter. The board's case against me is staying within the Ethics Commission. I'd also like to point out at this time that Mr. Riggs and Mr. Scanlon are not at all involved with these cases. And I won't lie, the past eight months have been very uncomfortable for all of us. The six complainants against me are the following people. Mr. Sean Giordano, the 2019 board president, current board candidate Nick Morandi, current board candidate Frank Polino, current board president Downing, current board member McAvoy, and current board member Peters. And now a note with regard to emails and text messages. It's been mentioned to me on more than one occasion by community members how the board doesn't seem to discuss enough in public, and that's right, we don't. I have implored this board more than once to please stop texting me large messages on my little old antique cellphone. 99% of the time, these messages are public information that belong on school email, not my personal cellphone. And Mr. Peters, that includes the 3:00 AM wake-up text that you managed to send me on November 7th, the night after the election, when you woke me up with a single-word text, "crickets", and I didn't even know what that meant until a friend explained it to me. My parents were in a nursing home, and I could not shut my phone off at night due to possible emergent calls. So now, I'm asking in public for my fellow board members, please use email. There's no excuse, because you all have access to it with your smartphones. Even though everyone says texting is easier, why? Because it erases. Emails are usually traceable, even when deleted, and they are subject to the Open Public Records Act. So what does that say for transparency? We're evading it when we text each other. Just my humble opinion. I read a lot of the materials sent by the New Jersey School Board Association, and I have attended a lot of NJ SBA training sessions. I've always been a fan of the Open Public Records Act and the Open Public Meetings Act. I am not required to get a smartphone, and I do not wish to be on the internet 24/7. That is my personal technology choice. My phone is 3G, and I know I will soon have to upgrade. Our next meeting may or may not be virtual. As everyone knows, we are following the governor's director, directives. Stay tuned for in-person or Zoom. And thank you again very much to all the participants listening in tonight. That's my comment. Thank you, Mr. Riggs.
So I'm going to jump in here for one second. I know, I know we're not doing this back and forth thing. But as far as the text messages go and the phone calls go, we can't, it just takes too long. I'm ser-, it takes way too long to email everything. Sometimes we just have to call each other and get things done.
In emergent cases, I'm fine with that, only in emergent cases, though.
And I've never, I don't think I've deleted a text message in the last eight years. So they're not that erasable. So I think it's acceptable ways, and not everything has to be, you know, down on where the public sees, like every move that we make. You know, there's a lot of times where we're together in different places, the three of us, or something like that. I don't know. I don't, I don't.
Not that. My phone can't handle the messages. I can't retain them. And some of the messages have been too long for my screen, to the point where I can't even read the whole thing.
All right. Well, I have to.
That's what's been happening. I've been getting very lengthy messages my phone can't handle.
And now I'm just going to let, now skip. I'm going to let you say just one thing here real quick. Don't get crazy, but if you would, if I let you respond real quick.
You know what, Mr. Riggs? This isn't the time or the place for taking it top of the public. We've been here a long time. But I just did have one question. She was out of town. She missed our meeting and was in church three days later. When there's our public there, she was in a town that you're supposed to quarantine for 14 days. And all as I said there, I was surprised to see you here.
You asked me six questions in a row, sir.
All right, guys. We're good.
Done. Thank you very much.
You all. All right. Anyway, I'm going to policy now. And guess what? I'm not even going to bore you guys to tears with policy. I'm going to tell you guys how to go look at it real quick, because these policies are, are bloated or stuffed. They're really long. So what you're going to do is, if you really want to read this stuff, there's only three of them. Restart and Recovery Plan, Remote Learning Options for Families, and Federal Families First Coronavirus Response Act. I know Mr. Rizzoli dug through these. They're, they're quite extensive. So how are you going to do it? If anybody wants to go read these, you go to our website. You go to About Us. You go to Board of Education. And then you go to Minutes and Agenda. And you can look up the, it's in a, an attachment underneath there, and they're quite long. So I won't, I won't read that all out to you, because there's really no way to boil them down and make them easy. They're, they're, they're just too long to do that for. Couple other things came up tonight, though. I will agree with what things were said earlier about the spring virtual learning was not ideal. But it was in a, it was something we came up with on the fly. And I think for what we did, it was actually pretty good. Now, we don't make these decisions that you see us making in a vacuum here. My kids go to, my kid goes to school here, and he slid backwards. And we were on top of him with stuff. And he had a fantastic teacher. I won't even call her out by name or anything, but she really cared. She really tried. So we can all hope that the fall version of that, we've improved over the summer, and we got better as it went along. Because the spring one was an emergency situation. We were thrown into it. Now we had a little bit more time to think about it. And I get it that everyone would be scared coming back into school. It's a school year. It's a, it's a world that we don't even understand. As ex, you know, students, as parents of kids, it's, it's alien to us, seeing our kids in masks everywhere they go and not being able to do little kid things. But I think they're going to do better than I think the older people will, because kids are adaptable and they're resilient. And they won't really have a problem with it. I think one weekend, they're all going to be fine with their masks and everything. It's going to be the rest of us who are still having a hard time with it. So that's really all I had tonight, guys. And I want to thank all the public for really, for being nice about it and sticking with us. We had a little bit of trouble on Monday, but now it's Thursday, and we figured it out. This is the new technological world, and I guess things happen sometimes. So that being said, we are going to move forward.
Before we, excuse me.
Go ahead, Mr. Scanlon. I'm sorry.
I missed, I, there was, there was one question that I wanted to ask Dr. Clark. And I know, I don't mean to put you on the spot here. If you don't know the answer, if you could get me the numbers, I'd appreciate it. Either the number of the LLD students or percentage of, you know, some way of identifying the amounts we're dealing with there, so that we can work on addressing that problem. Okay?
Yeah, I will get that for you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to be moving on. Mr. George.
I'm ready when you are.
Okay. So I make a motion, I'm sorry, move that the board approve new business A 1 through 22.
Motion, Mrs. DeSenza.
Second.
Mr. Scanlon.
Are you ready, sir?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes, I'd like you to stay on A 15, please.
Thanks, sir. Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs, is, Mr. Plino has not returned. Is that correct?
No, he's back.
He, hold on a minute.
Is he?
He says he is, but I don't, oh, wait, he is, but he's got no, hold on. He's here, but he's got no mic.
Uh, can I see him?
He said he's here. He.
Oh, I could see him in the panelist, but he doesn't have a mic or he doesn't have a video.
How do I find him?
He's texting me.
Plino, we're going to throw you right out of here.
Mrs. McAvoy, is he texting you his votes?
Yes, he said, I'm in. He said, he's here.
Can I get a vote for him somehow on new business?
Says on phone. All right, Frank, we know. Just, just tell us what you want. Actually, here, Frank, can you raise your hand? Yes, how's that? Raise your hand for a yes. Can you do anything?
Gotta love new technology.
No, I don't.
I don't think, does his.
He may have to star nine on a phone. If he's on a phone, he may have to star nine.
Do you want us to skip you?
I'll, I'll skip him for now.
Skip him.
Ah, there you go. He waved.
I think he's in the attendees. I think he's in the attendees.
That's okay. He waved.
He waved. It's a yes.
He waved. That's a yes.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Mrs. DeSenza. You're going to wave or a smoke signal? How are you going to do it?
Mrs. DeSenza is yes on all, but I'm going to abstain on the meeting minutes due to my absence, item one. And I'm also nay on list of bills, one item, 953579.
Just to be on the safe side, would you mind emailing me that, please?
I will email it tomorrow morning, yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Riggs?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Move that the board approve donations B.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Scanlon. Frank's here.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes, and thank you for your generosity.
Mr. Peters.
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Plino.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes, and thank you very much.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Thank you.
Move that the board approve C, programs and curriculum. Just.
Second.
Roll call, please, sir.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Plino.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Thank you.
The board approve B, professional days and workshops.
Motion, Mrs. DeSenza.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Plino.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Thank you.
That would move that the board approve certificated personnel 1 through 12 E.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Plino.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Thank you.
And for F, how about we move the board approve non-certificated personnel 1 through 4.
Motion, Mrs. DeSenza.
Who, who is that? Was that you, Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Plino.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes. That's all we have. Resolutions?
No, sir, we have nothing tonight.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'd like to comment in, maybe?
Oh, Mr. Plino didn't get the comment.
Oh, all right. Hold on a minute. Back it up.
Bring it, Mr. Plino. Go ahead.
You pull us back in.
You don't hear me? I'm really, I'm hearing every third word here. Are you getting me? You guys hear me okay?
Not really. Go ahead.
Okay. I just want to just, just thank the administration for, and the staff for all their diligent, hard work. And I know that what's going on is a ever-changing thing. You know, everything, every day, the governor's bringing something else upon us. I want to thank our, our, our community and our parents, you know, for really stepping up and getting involved and asking some great questions. You know, some answers, some questions we couldn't answer tonight, but I'm sure Dr. Clark will, we'll find out the answer for that. One thing I want to back up with, Mrs. Markatello said, you know, it's really those that, it's imperative about the flu shot this year, because she's right, that they, the COVID and the flu, they mimic each other, so you're not really going to know. So those that really never in the past got a flu shot, it'd probably be imperative that they did this year. But I like to think that, being that everybody's wearing masks this year, maybe the flu season is not going to be as bad as we thought it was going to be. So that might be a good thing that we're all wearing masks. So that may be a positive on this. The other thing, I just want to say, Mr. Rizzoli, and I thank you. I didn't make a comment last meeting, and I was hoping that the athletic director would be here. And Dr. Clark, I know you've been busy and probably forgot all about that. But I would think our athletic director would, would, would say that to herself that, you know, I'm a big part of this school system, maybe I should make myself present, but she didn't do that, and I'm disappointed in that. So maybe next month, we'll see her, and ever hear from her, and she can answer some questions for our public. Then, Mrs. DeSenza, your comments, you know, I agree with some of them, I disagree with others. You know, one thing I do take exception to, you keep pointing the finger at the board about inflated tax rates from the school board, this and you couldn't pay whatever you were donating because of the high price of the school stuff. You know, I just want everybody to know, you were part of that decision that increased the taxes in the school system, you know, with the contracts that you, that you helped hand out. So, so don't be so quick to point the finger at the, at the other board members and make it sound as though you had nothing to do with that.
I voted no on the budget, Frank.
It's my turn. Thank you very much. So, you know, don't sit back in the shadows and throw stones at other board members and things and act like you had no part in anything. But you know what? You do, you did, and, and the increase in taxes has everything to do with you did. So I just want the public to know that. And I thank you for the time. Everybody stay well and have a good evening.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night, Mr. Riggs.
Motion to adjourn.
Let's make that motion to adjourn. Who's got it?
Adjourn.
Second.
Do we have any, do we have anyone opposed?
Good night, Rob.
Have a good night, everybody.
Leave it dirty.
Good night.
Good night.